All right, it is.
Not quite.
Quite.
And, and we probably can't start the meeting till right at seven. But we can welcome people.
Is.
Not quite.
Quite. Thank you for everybody being here.
And, and we probably can't start the meeting till right at seven.
Any of your, your videos YouTube's coming through live.
Not quite. All right. I, I will put air buds in just one second.
Thank you for everybody being here.
And, and we probably can't start the meeting till right at seven.
Any of your, your videos YouTube's coming through live.
Not quite. Yeah, talk about looping. Air buds in just one second.
Thank you for everybody being here.
And, and we probably.
Okay. All right, YouTube is live and I'm gonna make myself. So you can't see me.
You ready to go then? Is it seven o'clock? I see it is. Well, welcome to our city council meeting, all of you on YouTube and those that are here. We're grateful for you being here in this, this different time and setting in which we're in. It is Tuesday, April 21st, 2020, and it is 7:00 PM. We have a full council with us tonight. Via Zoom, so we're, we're ready to do some business. We'd like to begin with a pledge of allegiance, and I think Jason Bond will lead us in there.
Can, can hear you, Jason.
I'll lead us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's harder when you're all by yourself. And Jason, you're muted.
All right. Would like to also have, begin with a invocation or inspirational thought. Is there anyone that would like to offer that for us? I'll do it. Our heavenly Father, as we bow before thee this evening, we're grateful for our many blessings. We're grateful for the city in which we live and the opportunity tonight to be at the city council meeting. Father, we pray that thy Spirit will be with us, that we'll be able to make the correct decisions. That it may be in harmony with what we want to see happen in, in our city. We're grateful for our residents and we pray for them, that they will be safe and that they'll be, be healthy and strong. That they will continue to work together to make this city grow and, and be the type of place that we'd all want to live in. We're grateful for the country in which we live and for the freedoms we enjoy. We pray, Father, that we'll be able to make it through this pandemic, that we'll be able to see things happen in a positive way, that we'll be back to, to normal, that our economy will return. And that we'll be able to enjoy life the way we've had. We're grateful again for all those who are serving us in the city, for police, fire, and EMS. For the doctors and nurses who are, are taking care of us as well. We again ask thee for thy Spirit here this night. We pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. Okay, do we have any conflict of interest with anything on the agenda tonight? Okay, moving on. Our consent agenda tonight. As the minutes of our council meeting of April 7th, 2020. As the council had an opportunity to, to read them, and if there are any additions or corrections, please speak up. Okay, we also have the bills for $257,378.94. Any questions or concerns on the bills? Okay, we also have on the consent agenda, item C1, Resolution 0409, 2020. A resolution approving the second amended interlocal agreement and joint cooperative action of Central Utah 911 to Pleasant Grove City, to the, to the district. Any questions are on that? Okay, we also have item C2, Resolution 0410, 2020. A resolution ratifying the execution of the Second Amendment to, to the annexation and development agreement of Summit Ridge related to open space requirements and park dedication with undated, updated terms from Resolution 0407, 2020. Previously approved on April 7th, 2020. Any questions on that, council?
So you're up there, you need to vote. I'm not muted.
Okay, if no questions, look for a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilman Millard. We have a second.
Second, Mayor.
All right, we have a, a second by Councilman Meacham. We will do a roll call on this. Councilman Miller.
Aye.
Councilman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilman Meacham.
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya. Did you say aye? I'm not hearing you, Betsy.
Sorry, I was trying to use my spacebar. Aye.
Thank you. And Councilman Hathaway.
Aye.
Thank you, that was unanimous. Okay, public forum tonight, we'll let, turn it over to Jason. He's got some people that would like to speak to us on public forum.
Okay, the first comment that was emailed in was a phone number. I'm gonna be dialing this resident. This is Mr. Brendan Bowen, who would like to comment on connecting frontage road two and utilization of south exit for construction traffic. Hello, Mr. Bowen, this is Jason Bond at Santaquin City. You are on the, the city council agenda right now. We are in the public forum session, so go ahead and speak and, and the council will be able to hear you.
All right. I've spoken to previous city councils on this issue. And the issue's on the, the D.R. Horton project off of 900 South. And we live on 900 South, and we've spoken before about initially wanting some considerations for the extreme traffic and, and the increased truck noise and the impact. And we were told there'd be a road connecting the south exit to the frontage road. And the number of houses that were required before that was going to be mandated to be put in. The number of houses required has been moving upwards, so it seems to be somewhat arbitrary. We haven't seen any kind of a, an impact mitigation plan for mitigating noise, dust. You know, even the timing of the truck, it starts at 6:30 in the morning, sometimes ends into 8 o'clock at night. You know, so there's, there's been no alleviation. It seems like everybody's slowed down and is quarantining except construction and healthcare workers. And we're quarantining and really can't go out and do anything, so we're stuck here, getting the brunt of it, hour after hour. We count as many as one truck a minute. These are heavy trucks on this small road. It's only 20 feet wide. And, you know, there's kids out here and whatnot, but anyway, there's been no, no interest or momentum to make this happen. We talked to the mayor in fall last year about starting the, the connecting road in the spring that would alleviate some of this. It's spring now, we haven't seen any sign of progress. There is the south entrance that the construction trucks could use. Even if they used it half the time, it would help, but they're not using it at all. There's just no alleviation for us residents. And any efforts that we've made have come across as us trampling on the rights of the developers. We just, right now, us and many of our neighbors who thank us for, you know, asking these questions and trying to at least get some attention. But none of us feel like anyone cares. There really has been zero consideration for it, and we just ask to be, to be human, to be neighbors, to be considerate, to be, you know, reasonably responsible to each other because we all live here and we've gotten nothing. And I was hoping that somebody could comment on some of the progress that's going on there so that we can at least see some light at the end of the tunnel because right now it looks pretty dark.
Okay.
I wanna know if anyone cares.
Norm, could you answer any of his questions? See where, tell us where we're at there.
Sure, there has been a pre-construction meeting held for the actual frontage road construction a couple of weeks ago. They anticipate having that road constructed this, this paving season this year. It's gonna, it's gonna come up pretty fast. The, the arbitrary indication is not the case. There is a, there is a provision in the development agreement that, that indicates that up to 150 homes could be serviced off of that existing road, but when they hit the 101st, 151st building permit, that, that building permit will not be issued until that frontage road is completely connected, paved, and ready to drive on and, and dedicated to the, to the city for public right of way.
Well, that number used to be in the eighties. It went up to below 100, now it's at 150.
It, it's always been 150.
No. But either, either way, I mean, see what is, is it May, here we are. What's the timing on getting that road done? Because it's not just the trucks, it's the service vehicles, it's the, the traffic between the, the new residents and people coming and going. There's just no alleviation. Is there a timing on that?
And why does there have to be a timing on it? Why can't it just be put in?
Again, that's a contractual thing, Mayor, that, that is under the development agreement, both signed by the previous developer, which D.R. Horton has now become a successor to, and the city.
You know, even before that rezoning got put in, we were promised in this area that night south was to never be used as the main entrance into that. Into Horton construction area.
Well, since, since this agreement was done. Never heard anything other than 150.
Okay, so let me, let me relay what, what the mayor's saying, but, but the mayor is, is gonna talk right now for a second. I'll, I'll try and relay what, what he says to you.
For as long as I'd known this agreement was in place, I was on the councilor, mayor when it happened, and it's always been 150. And if they've heard different than that, I, I apologize because it's always been 150. And the way they're building homes, that, that 150 first permits coming fast. They can't get that 150 first permit until that road is done. So it will happen this year.
So Mayor Huntaker said that as long as he's been the mayor and on the city council, it has been 150 building permits before the road needs to be completed. So with that said, they have, are moving forward with constructing the road. And 150 first building permits coming really quick and, and it's anticipated that this road will be finished this year.
I put the, the December 31st. Is there any more granularity on that? Anything more specific?
Norm, do we know what permit they're on right now?
I don't know the number on that. I know it's over 100, so they're coming up on it pretty fast. I think they're probably closer to 120. 118 is what's being relayed to me is what they're currently at. So they got about 30 more homes, 30 more building permits that they could pull. Every indication is, as far as granularity, every indication is, is that, that will be done just as quickly as possible. Again, they, we, we have had, they have bonding in place and we have had the, the pre-construction meeting, and so it's, 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 it's not in the dark. It basically is gonna be happening this year and they're gonna be locked into a corner if they don't get it done. So I, I would anticipate, and I can't hold the contractor to a timeframe because that's not what's contracted, but I would anticipate that in the next 60 to 90 days, they're gonna need that road to be able to pull, pull building permits.
Were you able to hear the city engineer's comments?
A, a little bit. Our, our concern is with the downturn that's going to be coming up with construction that knowing Horton, they're going to stop at 149 houses and that frontage road won't go in for another couple of years. What guarantee do we have that the city's going to look out for our best interest?
Well, it's something we can't count on, but we, everything that we've could do as a city, we've done to be able to get that frontage road done without us having to pay for it through city funds. So hopefully the economy keeps going. Every intention that what we've heard, the construction's gonna continue. In fact, they've ramped up through all this that's going on, even to do more. So what we see, they're gonna be doing more.
So what is in the interest of goodwill, that they could start the construction of that road sooner rather than later? I mean, it sounds like they're reluctant to do this, even though it would serve their interests and make an easier interest, but I just don't understand it.
So the, the developer has a, a pre-construction meeting, they're moving forward with it. And we're, we're anticipating that they're gonna be working on it as quickly as possible. So that's all that we can hope for, and because we're contractually obligated to, to wait till the 150 first building permit to hold them up or, or take any action to prevent them moving forward, then that's kind of what we're obligated to, to follow.
If you could ask for it, that would be nice because we're all still humans after all.
Absolutely, and we'll, we'll do that. We'll, we'll speak with D.R. Horton and, and continue to remind them about the impacts you're feeling.
Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. All right, Mr. Mayor, we have three more public comments. We have one from Chelsea Rowley. The subject of the email is "No to the Rezone." She says, quote, "I have concerns about the rezone on the agenda tonight. I applaud Mr. Melhoff's planning. He truly considered some thoughtful designs, one of the classiest we've seen. But we do not need a single more town, a, a single more town home approved only a stone throw distance from 400 plus already approved for this area. I understand that commercial behind other stores is not as appealing, but not every business needs foot traffic. Commercial areas can also be used for USU extension classrooms, business offices, farm-to-table experiences, vets, or a million other options. Please don't be short-sighted in what this area can become. We had a great conference last year on the vision of Harvest View at 242, and I still think such an experience is achievable in time. When this land was purchased, they knew it was commercial and we shouldn't make exceptions for residential when we have so many vacant homes in town right now. Our commercial areas are so limited already. We need to preserve it for future economic growth so we can afford to build the office spaces our growing city so desperately needs. Please vote no to the rezone. Respectfully yours, Chelsea Rowley." Close quote. Next public comment is from Jace Rowley, from Rowley's South Ridge Farms at 901 South 300 West in Santaquin, Utah 84655. He says, Santaquin City, quote, "Santaquin City Council, Rowley's South Ridge Farms opposes the presented zoning change from commercial zoning to RTN zoning for the proposed Georgetown development on the Melhoff property. Our property is located adjacent north to the considered Melhoff property. We are opposing the zoning change for the following reasons. First bullet point, the zoning change is a departure from the plan that Santaquin City has envisioned for the exit 242. The areas surrounding this exit has been proposed as an agriculturally-based business and entertainment center to attract people to our city. Having population densities this highly concentrated in the exit 242 area is in direct contrast to this vision. Second bullet point, as part of the exit 242 plan, Utah State University is working on a study and we feel it would be made useless by any sudden changes to the current zoning plan. Third bullet point, the subject property was purchased knowing that it was zone commercial. Fourth bullet point, having that many people living next to our orchard presents problems to our farming operation. Our farm is fully operational and, and runs equipment, wind machines, chemical programs, pruning programs, and harvesting equipment. These operations can be disruptive to neighbors. Conversely, neighbors can be disruptive to our operations. Trespassing, trespassing and vandalism is always a concern. This concern is amplified with such high-density housing. Fifth and final bullet point, even though the presentation given by Georgetown Development looked appeasing and was presented well, we think it would be premature to recommend RTN status without a development agreement. We think if the economy continues to decline, we could be left with an RTN zone without a development. This would open the door for anyone to utilize the RTN status. We don't feel that this is the best interest of our community. Thank you for your considering our concerns. Best, Rowley's South Ridge Farms." The final public comment that was submitted is a lengthy one, so bear with me. This is regarding the public comment letter to the Santaquin City Council from Brad Gunnel, Jessica Tolman, and Arthur Adcock to the Santaquin City Council. This public comment letter is to provide some insight into the thinking and reasons, reasons behind our votes as planning commissioners to forward a negative recommendation to city council for the proposed Melhoff rezone on the city council agenda tonight. We don't pretend to speak for any other members of the planning commission, much less for the planning commission as a whole. As there are no official minutes from our last meeting available, and after some miscommunication between city council and the planning commission in the course of the last rezoning matter, we thought it may be helpful if we set up our personal reasons in more detail for the city council. This letter simply reflects each of our personal thoughts on the proposal and our individual reasons for voting against it. Importantly, we want it to be known that our decision was not based on any dissatisfaction with the product the proponent is considering for the parcel. While we were impressed by the product, in the end, the decision was not as simple as asking, quote, "Do we want this type of development in Santaquin?" End quote. Instead, the question was whether this is the right place in Santaquin for this type of development. And whether it is worth trading a large portion of our remaining commercially zoned in the city for this. In our opinion, after reviewing the proposal, public comment, and the city's general plan, this is not the right place. And now is not the time to be trading what little commercially zoned property we have left for our, for more residential, especially in this location. In the event the city council disagrees, we would propose that, given how far this development would deviate from current city staff vision, city zoning, and the general plan, any rezone of this property should be done as part of a larger rezoning process and revision of at least the south interchange area portion of the city's general plan, if not the entire general plan. In more detail, our reasons include the following. This proposal would put 178 residential units, most of them high-density, immediately next to two working commercial operations. The Rowley's Orchards to the north and Green Hall, or, or Green Hall Construction's gravel pit to the west. The city also operates a gravel pit to the northwest of the property. Both Rowley Farms and Green Hall Construction have written their opposition, opposition to this rezone as placing residential, especially high-density, next to their operations would potentially, next to their operations would potentially disrupt their operations, increase complaints, and invite trespassing. Neither had previously had any thought that there may, may be residential development nearby, given the general plan, and especially in light of recent discussions with city staff about working together for an agritourism hub in the area with no discussion of residential development, much less high-density development. Currently, the city, currently the Santaquin City Code requires that, quote, "In order to grant an approval for the rezoning of property, the city council must find that, one, the rezoning conforms to the intent of the Santaquin City General Plan and Annexation Policy Plan. Two, the rezoning will not adversely affect surrounding properties. And three, the rezoning will not cause property, structures, or uses of the property to unnecessarily become non-conforming according to this title." Close quote. While the similar provisions related to the planning commission go too far, and while there is concern that this may overly restrict the city council, these are items that should be considered anytime a rezoning request is heard. Our residents buy property, build homes, start and grow businesses based in part on the city zoning map and general plan. The general plan and zoning map are a city's representation to residents of what they can expect to happen around them in the future. And residents build their personal visions for the future in part around those representations. This is evident by the opposition to this project from the only two neighbors actively using the property. This was never in their expectations as they built their businesses. Regardless of whether the city council can underline rezon this property without making those three findings, those three issues should, underlined, be discussed as part of the decision-making process. These considerations seem to be part and parcel of rezoning in other Utah County cities. Provo City provides that when a zoning amendment is proposed, quote, "The planning commission shall determine whether such amendment is in the interest of the public and is consistent with the goals and policies of the Provo City General Plan." Close quote. The guidelines to be used by the Provo Planning Commission include, among other things, whether the public purpose is best served by the amendment, compatibility with the general plan, and adverse impacts on adjacent landowners. Lehigh City requires the city staff to compile a report for the planning commission and city council on, quote, "Whether the proposed amendment is consistent with the elements of the general plan, the effect of the proposed amendment on the existing goals, objectives, and policies of the general plan, and listing any revisions to this code that would be needed to implement the proposed amendment." Close quote. And then Pace and City goes so far as to require the applicant itself to reason for the rezone to demonstrate, quote, "How the proposed amendment would further the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance and how the proposed amendment is consistent with the Pace and City General Plan." Close quote. As part of their application for a rezone. Every city whose rezoning provisions are reviewed provide for some level of deference to the general plan and/or neighbors. Why? Because our residents rely on zoning, so amendments should not be made lightly that disrupt that vision and reliance. Here, this proposal not only is unanimously opposed by the affected adjacent neighbors, but it also conflicts with the Santaquin City, with, with Santaquin City's current general plan. The general plan in part provides that, first bullet point, existing agricultural and animal rights should be given higher priority and protections when adjacent to new development. That's in the general plan, chapter two, page eight. Second bullet point, the relationship of planned land uses should reflect consideration of existing development, agricultural preservation, environmental conditions, service and transportation needs, and fiscal impacts. That's in the general plan, chapter two, page four. Third bullet point, lot design and house placement should minimize conflict with ongoing agricultural operations and natural areas. That's in the general plan, chapter two, page 15. Fourth bullet point, transitions between different land uses and intensities should be made gradually with compatible uses, particularly where natural or man-made buffers are not available. That's in the general plan, chapter two, page five. Fifth bullet point, growth should be directed to locations contiguous to existing development or on infill properties to provide city services and transportation in a cost-effective and efficient manner. That's in the general plan, chapter two, page five. Sixth bullet point, density increases should be considered only upon demonstration of adequate infrastructure, resource availability, amenities and benefit to the community and residents of the project. General plan, chapter two, page five. Seventh bullet, bullet point, agricultural preservation is a significant land use which will preserve the character of Santaquin. Agricultural uses must be protected from encroachment, from new development, and recognized Agricultural uses must be protected from encroachment from new development and recognized as the preferred land use. Mitigation of noise, dust, or other annoyances to the developed area by the operation of agribusiness will not result in a forced reduction of agribusiness. New adjacent development must recognize that agribusiness will continue to operate in Santaquin. General plan, chapter two, page five. Eighth bullet point. Discourage leapfrog development through urban growth boundaries and by not extending city services to new areas until existing areas are substantially developed. General plan, chapter two, page eight. And final bullet point. Goal, to preserve productive agricultural lands for continued agricultural use, protect farmer operations from conflict with incompatible uses, and maintain a strong agricultural economy. It is exceedingly difficult to reconcile this proposed residential development in this location once the adverse impact on neighbors and its conflict with the general plan are considered. What way are what weight are we willing to give to the general plan? And the effect on the adjacent property owners and their businesses? Well, this may be an attractive project. This is not the location for it. Furthermore, based upon a review of recent city council meeting minutes, city staff continues to actively move forward its project two forty-two agritourism vision for this area and is, among other things, talking with landowners, orchards, and agricultural concerns in the area to generate support for the vision, negotiating to move the Utah G U F county line to facilitate the project and discussing location options with Utah State University as part of the project. A quick look at the present city zoning map shows that this rezone would take a chunk out of the heart of this vision. Not only that, but it continues to reduce the amount of available commercial property in the city overall. With the coming approximate four hundred high-density units east of the new soccer fields, this commercial property is finely poised for development in the near future as those units come online. Since the planning commission meeting, Brad Gunnel has been contacted by local business owners who indicated that they would be willing to buy and develop that property for commercial use if it were available. There is potential for commercial use of the whole property and given its location by two gravel pits in a working orchard, we believe that this property continues to serve the public interest in Santaquin as C one commercial property. We thank you for your time and consideration of our thoughts on this matter, respectively, Brad Gunnel, Jessica Tolman, Arthur Adcock. Mayor, those are all the city public comments.
Thank you, Jason. Take a deep breath. Thank you. All right. No formal public hearing tonight. Building permits, new businesses.
Okay, I think Ben looks like he's sharing the screen. So to date, we have sixty-nine new single-family homes and nineteen new multifamily residential dwelling units. If you total that up, we are are a little bit behind pace of where we were at this time last year. Last year, we were at a hundred and three. Right now, in total, we are at eighty-eight. New business licenses. And there's there's a number, a number of them here. I'll read them. But this is kind of a carryover from the last city council meeting. So that's why there's so many of them. So we have Party of Six Events and Decor LLC owned by Macy's still six fifty south one hundred west. That's event planning and decor. Lunch Sat Girl Artesian Breads. This is Michaela R. Johnson, ten seventeen North Appleseed Lane. This is described as a cottage food establishment, but it's my understanding that it would be like a booth in the parking lot of a current business, kind of like a a snowshack type temporary business. We have one Michael Brown Foundation LLC owned by Michael Brown, five oh two Firestone Drive for photography and e-commerce. We have MC Yard Hand owned by Mitch Coombs, five fifty-four North one hundred west Yard Work and Fencing. We have Barnes Aesthetics Jade Fuller, one twelve west seven seventy north. This is aesthetics, lash extensions, waxing, and brow tinting. We have Beehive Homes of Santaquin owned by Dennis McGrath, four oh nine south three hundred west. This is an assisted living home. This is an existing assisted living home, but this is just a renewal of their business license. Then we have Santaquin Little Scholars Preschool, Kristen Wilson, sixty-six east seven eighty south. This is a preschool. This is a major home occupation and it did receive a conditional use permit from the planning commission at their last meeting or a couple meetings ago. Then we have American Built Corps, Chana Sidwell at one eighty-two Oh Henry Street. And this is building roundwood cores. I had to look up what roundwood cores were and they're like cylindrical things with with a square hole in them so that it could act as as kind of like a some sort of a wheel or or something like that. So it's it's some woodworking type related. So those are our new businesses. Those are business licenses. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Eric, I should probably also point out that though no announcement publicly was made, the sign was put up for our new grocery store and officially announced as a Macy's that Macy's is owned by the same group, the Sealy Group that owns the Pace and Market, the Nebo Market, the Mount Pleasant Market, and the Gunnison Market. But it's under the Macy's franchise, so we're excited and to welcome Macy's to our community. It will have Arctic Circle within that grocery store as well as an Ace Hardware and a Beans and Brews. So we're we're very excited to have this new announcement in our community and want to extend a welcoming hand. And then also just to clarify, Beehive Homes is actually a new owner to the assisted living center.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on. We have item nine A. Have new business discussion possible action regarding preliminary approval of the Summit Ridge Town Homes development. Approximately twelve hundred west Summit Ridge Drive. Is that you, Jason?
Yep. So Mayor and Council, just a brief introduction, and it's my understanding that that in the room with with Assistant City Manager Norm Beagley and Councilmember Hathaway, I believe we have some 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 of the the applicants, the developer Curtis Levitt, as well as their their engineer Nate from LEI. And then it's my understanding that we also have an Adam Loser that is going to be participating over Zoom. I don't know if he's in the waiting room or not, but we'll we'll keep an eye on that. If he comes comes through, we'll just add him to the meeting so that he can participate. So just a brief introduction to this, the Summit Ridge Town Homes. I'm sorry, the Summit Ridge Town Home subdivision is located at Summit Ridge Parkway and twelve hundred west, which is just east of the new soccer fields. The proposal consists of four hundred and twenty-nine townhomes on approximately forty-three point one two acres. That's approximately ten units per acre with ten point three five acres of open space. The amenities that they are proposing include a tot lot, hammock grotto, pool with restrooms, a terrapark, dog park, and enhanced entry with a windmill and tractor. And I think they will will go into that a little bit more detail about that in their presentation. The proposed subdivision is is must comply with the Summit Ridge Development Agreement and Santaquin City Code. As you all know, there was a a recent second amendment to that Summit Ridge Development Agreement, which was recently approved and ratified approval of that with 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 a few changes earlier in this meeting. That that second amendment addressed open space and dedication requirements. The planning commission reviewed the preliminary plan and they motioned to recommend approval to the city council for the Summit Ridge Town Homes with the following conditions. That the second amendment of the Summit Ridge Development Agreement be executed. The plans are in compliance with the Summit Ridge Development Agreement as amended and that all red lines be addressed. The motion was seconded and the vote was unanimous in the affirmative. Architectural Review Committee has met and reviewed their proposed renderings for the different townhouse types. And they have received conditional approval for those designs. So where we're at in this process, it's it's received the concept plan with a public hearing. It's now gone to DRC Planning Commission and now it's before the council for your consideration of approval of the preliminary plan. If they receive approval, then their last step would be needing to to do the the subsequent final plats for for that. And and my understanding is that they have is it four, five phases of of this this subdivision. So that that's a brief introduction for you. It's my understanding that that the applicants would like to present something and and so I'll I'll turn this over to Norm's computer so that he can share his screen and and let them present, I guess. If that's good with you, Mayor.
Yes, that's great. Let's hear from him.
So we have Curtis Levitt with us from D R Horton. And I will be sharing my screen here so that we can see his presentation as he starts to so Penny, can you enable me to participate as a to screen share, please? Do you have the ability to? Okay, I got it. Thank you. So on the screen shortly, you will see this is the Summit Ridge Town Homes Development Plan, and I will give the time to Curtis Levitt with D R Horton. Would you test the microphone? Make sure that we're good? Can is are we hearing him?
Can everybody hear me?
I'm hearing him.
Okay.
You hear me okay?
Yeah, speak right into the microphone, please.
I will speak here and make sure I so council members, honorable mayor, sure great to be here with you again today. Last week, we had the opportunity to present our concept plan, actually our preliminary plat to the planning commission last week. First and foremost, just want to commend your staff and in working with us, we've had a lot of opportunities meeting together and getting some different insight and preparing and developing a development that's going to stand tall in the city of Santaquin. We've had an opportunity to go back and forth and go between eighteen to twenty different iterations to which we feel that we've got the the right plan and it's going to be really a fantastic development that's going to be something that D R Horton is going to be proud to present, build, and hopefully Santaquin City will also reap the benefits of this development in the city. Just to give a little background, most of the city council will look familiar, so I believe most of you have heard this gone through this concept plan. I know some of you may be new, but Jason did a great job in kind of giving a short overview or an overview of the the more or less the details, the size of the development, the units, the overall density and so forth. I just wanted to give just a little background as to when we had an opportunity to look at this parcel, we take a lot of time and spend a lot of our resources in mapping this out and looking at it from the perspective of what type of floor plans would the general public like to see here? Furthermore, what type of amenities when we build a community like this, what type of amenities can be brought to this within this development? They're going to benefit the residents there and also be something that is going to be something of benefit for any future buyer, you know, if and when they decide to resell their property as well. But the the site plan you're looking at is essentially just greened up and just give me a short, just giving you an overview of the overall side. And Norm, if you would mind going to the second. Giving you a little bit more flavor for what you would see within the community. Those are some snapshots of some actual photos of some of the amenities we'll be placing in the community. The top left-hand corner, you can see that the outdoor pool itself and the restrooms, that is actually within one of our communities in the Mapleton Grove Development is currently being built. That would actually be indicative of very, very similar pool and restroom facility built within this community. The location of which I'll show you shortly where that's located. Secondly, to the right, there's also a hammock grotto. And I apologize if you can't see on the screen there. But the location of the hammock grotto is just adjacent to the pool and to the restrooms. That is an amenity that we found amongst a few of our different developments we've built that has been received well by our residents and that they can go put up a hammock and just relax and go read a book and just have some leisure time there. It's been received very well. Coming to the right there. To the right, coming down, you'll see, as Jason mentioned, with our enhanced entry, we realize the vision and what the city is trying to present with their developments is an agritourism style development. So we've tried to enhance our entryway to bring in a tractor and also a windmill. And those are actual photos within a community we have. They're in a different surrounding city within the valley here. So that will be at the entrance of the community. Also coming down, we've had. Yes, go ahead.
I think I'm not sure if anyone's seeing. I still am looking at just the the green layout, the original slide number one. I'm not sure if anyone else is seeing any of the photos that you're discussing.
Thank you.
Okay, I may have to reshare the screen. Hang on a second.
Moving from one screen, an item from one screen to another, such as the TV stops, I've noticed.
How about now?
You need to maximize the screen, Norm. It's just a small snippet of of your Blue Bean program.
Now?
Not yet. It's still a small snippet. You probably need to maximize first, then stop, share, then reshare.
Sorry, guys, I can't figure out why it's not giving me my share screen. Do this really quick. Now, can you see it now?
It looks good, Norm.
Okay. All right, hang on just a second. We're going to get rebooted here and I'm going to get this out of the way. Can't even move that out of the way, so I'm going to have to do it like that, Curtis. So just go ahead and go off of the the screen that you're seeing here.
Sure, sure. So I think I ended up, the last side of my reference was the the tractor. And then also the windmill to enhance that entryway to that tourism. Basically, as a being approaching to the community there. Down below to the bottom right-hand side, you'll see there's a stock photo of a dog park. And many of the municipalities we work with, they're within townhome communities. A lot of the residents have been asking for an area for dog parks to take their pets. They'll have an area for them to play around in. Now that is an actual, it's a photo, a stock photo that is not within our current community. Do not want to make sure I need, let you know that that is not an actual photo of what would be there per se, but it gives you an idea of where what would actually be placed there within the location of our dog park. To the left, you, we've actually placed the actual type of fencing that will be around the dog park as well as the pool. So there's some ornamental black fencing there that you can see. To the bottom left-hand side, within the tot lot, those are four different styles of tot lots that are within the range within our budget would be providing within the community to give you an idea as to the size of this. Then we talked about the terrapark. But overall, the, once again, the importance of building our community with our townhomes is to more or less build, be building a community as a lifestyle component to it. There's many different meandering and different area sidewalks that actually lend itself going into the commercial areas. There's many different meandering and different area sidewalks that actually lend itself going into the commercial areas as well. We can go, we can go to the next slide, Norm, but depending on the technical, okay, we got it. Great. Very good.
Are you seeing that now, Ben?
Good, Norm. That looks good.
Amazing. Go ahead, Chris.
Very good. That is an actual, our current phasing plan as we plan on developing the community there. You'll see in red, that's the first phase. Within the first phase will be the pool area there with the the restrooms, hammock grotto. And you'll see that there's two entrances into the community. It's a, it's a large first phase with a hundred and three proposed units there. And then going throughout the community, you can see how we will continue to phase throughout the community. Next, I wanted to kind of give an idea, I give you guys an idea a little bit to the the style of homes that we'll be building and the locations of those. I wonder if you go to the next slide. Thank you. Within this plan, you'll see that there's some light brown and dark brown that are highlighted within the site plan. We have two different types of homes, a front loaded, traditional townhome, and then also an alley loaded townhome that has a garage in the rear. And wanted to give you an idea, Norm, of the next phase, the next slide. Will be giving you an idea of the alley loaded townhomes, which you can see. We we have two different styles of architecture, which is going to be a craftsman style and a farmhouse style. You can get an idea. Those are the floor plans that we're building there. Of course, the the color palettes and the actual colors there may not be identical within the Summit Ridge development, but as Jason mentioned, we have gone through Architectural Review Committee and have those been able to receive those approvals within those. And then, Norm, the second, the next slide. And these are the light brown that are shaded on that map that we looked at before. This is a traditional townhome. They are all two car garages. They're eighteen feet wide and they're twenty feet deep on the drive place. So they're a range in square footage anywhere between thirteen hundred to seventeen hundred square feet with these two different floor plans. But wanted to give the council an idea to the four plans we're building, the architecture, we pride ourselves in how we're building our homes and the architecture that we're building here in Summit Ridge. We are excited to move forward and hopefully seeking a positive recommendation approval this evening. Any questions?
So Curtis is is available to answer any questions that you have, Mayor or council members?
Yeah, the question I had, I already asked you about it, Norm. As a member of the Summit Creek Irrigation Board, we have a concern about the the drainage through there and high water. Can you explain how that's being taken care of?
I can, Mayor. The the design actually takes into account nineteen ninety-five or nineteen ninety-six annexation agreement that requires the developer to or the the property owners to convey five hundred CFS through the development. Currently that's shown and I can, I can pull up a if you give me a minute, if you want me to, I can pull up a drawing on that, but essentially goes basically right through the middle of the development. There will be some burns that are created upstream from the development to be able to handle five hundred CFS. And then there will be as as part of this development, there will be a, for lack of a better term, a flood road, a flood street. Not unlike what you see in in Saint George, although it won't be, it won't function the same. It will still be for the same purpose as providing for that five hundred CFS to travel through the development. So they have a current design that takes care of that, and and I believe that that should be well in in quantity wise, well above what the irrigation company, I believe, would be concerned about. That the five hundred CFS is is a, for lack of a better term, a seven or an eight thousand year storm. You know, point zero 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 seven probability percentage point, that type of thing. So we that is something that we have been working with them on. They've done a great job with that, and I don't have any concern that that it will handle anything coming from Summit Creek and more.
Great, thank you. That should take care of it. Any other questions, council? If not, I look for motion on this.
And Mayor, maybe because sharing screens and that's that's kind of difficult. Maybe one way to do this is is the planning commission's motion would be pretty consistent with what staff's recommended motion would be, and that would be that that the city council approved the city, the Summit Ridge Town Homes with the following conditions. The plans are in compliance with the Summit Ridge Development Agreement as amended, and that all red lines be addressed.
Good. I agree. I'm still looking for a motion.
I will make that motion.
Did you say so moved?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Montoya. Do we have a second?
I'll second it, Mayor.
So you, you got some. Second by Councilman Miller. All in favor, say aye.
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 We got it, didn't we? I think I saw a green circle thing around all of it. Oh, right, Ben, I was supposed to do it. Individual vote on that, but I think it was unanimous. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have item nine B, ordinance zero four zero four, two thousand twenty. An ordinance regarding a possible rezone of a portion of the Melhoff property from interchange commercial C one to R ten P U D. Approximately thirty-five acres at three hundred west, one thousand south. So you, Jason?
Yeah. Mayor and council. As was indicated in 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 the mayor's introduction of this agenda item, this is a proposed rezone. This is a legislative action, so this is the council's discretion of whether or not this this approval is given. Mister Trent Melhoff owns fifty-six point six three acres in total. Just across the street and and south a little bit of the the Red Barn, that's at approximately three hundred west and one thousand south. That entirety of that property is zoned interchange commercial. Their proposal for this rezone is to rezone approximately thirty-five point three nine acres of that property, which would be the west side of that property. And it's proposed to be rezoned to residential R ten with a plan unit development or P U D designation. The proposed development shows a hundred and seventy-eight units, has a mix of residential types, including detached single family homes and various different types of attached townhomes. The proposed development shows twenty-three point two zero acres of open space. This includes fully improved park space with amenities. And then what they refer to as meadow type open space, which is not manicured like fully improved open space, but has a more natural appearance to it. The proposed, the proposal was reviewed by the planning commission and the following recommendation was, or yeah, the following recommendation was given. A motion was made to forward a negative recommendation to the city council against the proposed Melhoff property rezone. Planning commissioners who who supported that motion were Commissioner Adcock, Commissioner Gunnel, Commissioner Tolman, and Commissioner Wood. Planning commissioners who were opposed to that motion were Commissioner Curtis and Commercial Commissioner Lance. So that vote passed four two. Staff really sees three possibilities with this this item. One, there would be an option to not to to deny the rezone request. Two, to approve the rezone conditioned upon the execution of a development agreement, which is a standard requirement anyways in a P U D. And that, right now, the current orange reads that that development agreement would need to be executed within a year after approval. And the third option is to table the agenda item to either study the request more or to table it so that that the city and the applicant has time to flesh out and work on a development agreement, which can then be approved concurrently with the with the approval of the rezone. So with with those three different alternatives, if if the council were to decide to to move forward with it, our recommendation in speaking with legal counsel is that the the agenda item be tabled and that we take time to have a development agreement fleshed out and and ready for approval concurrently with the approval of the rezone. Frankly, staff is pretty indifferent about this. There's there's great arguments on both sides. And that's kind of the introduction for you. I know that the applicants are also in the room with with Assistant City Manager Beasley and and Councilmember Hathaway. So if it's all right with you, Mayor, like the last agenda item, we'll we'll turn it over to them for their presentation.
Right, that's okay. Bring it on. We'd like to hear it.
So you're just gonna be right on here. Who's, are you gonna be presenting or somebody else gonna be presenting?
We both will be.
Okay, you'll need to state your names.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll be presented first. Well, I'll present first.
Okay, so I'll be sharing my screen. The first person that will be sharing, the speaking will be Trent Melhoff. And then his associate will be, will follow him in part of this presentation. So let me pull this up and we'll start with their presentation. You'll have to go off of here. For some reason, that messes up with, I hope you can see from here.
And if it's possible. Can I control it like I did?
No. No, I got the control right here.
You got that. So I'll need to ask you to.
Yep, you'll just need to ask me to advance and then we should be good that way, so.
Probably is probably. Advance to probably slide, slide number two after that.
Okay, let me maximize it here so that you guys can see it better. So that the one you want or how far? Okay. So this is Trent Melhoff to present for you.
That's partially. I'm not quite as polished. First off, council members and Mayor. It's good to be here today. I'm not as polished as Chris just was as far as speaking before the council. This is kind of weird not having anybody in front of me.
We concur.
And I don't even know if you can see me or not. But anyway, I'm Trent Melhoff. I've been in the RV business for approximately forty years. I broke away from a family business up in Orem and purchased one in Springville on approximately two acres. And I've been there for the last thirty, thirty plus years. I've got one son in the business, otherwise I probably wouldn't be here. Who wants to continue in the business and stay in the business? And so that's another reason why I'm here. But when I, when I first purchased the property, like I said, I was on two acres there in Springville. My first purchase of property. My goal was to put a business here and I came in and talked with I'm trying to remember his name.
Dennis Mark.
Dennis Marker. Came and talked with Dennis Marker, sat down with the mayor, and I think there was, I recognized one of the faces on the city council, maybe two. And and kind of went over, but it was just too expensive for me to try to put it together because of the infrastructure that was required to try to to make it work. It just wasn't going to work for me. And so on a couple of different occasions to talk with them, I ran across one of my an old business partner. In fact, we own eleven acres, well, ten plus acres just on the north end of Santaquin that they have actually annexed in. That probably should be zoned commercial also. They put an interchange right there going over from, I don't have a map right there, but one twenty-four. We, I mean, we'd like to see that commercial, and I think it should be commercial because I think as a couple of planning commissioners said previously, they thought we were taking up too much commercial from the commercial plan. But I would say that there's going to be quite a lot more commercial that maybe not be on the, on the, on the the master plan right now, but down the road, as you see what has taken place in other cities, that is what always transpires. I know that the the Rowleys, I think, I believe that they really want this project, even though they don't know that yet. The reason why I say that is because we are bringing in approximately four thousand feet, almost, it's going to be close to a mile of sewer in that area, which will facilitate. I can't point there, Kevin. But it'll facilitate all of that area of being, having sewer to it and being developed, and I'm willing to bring in my business now. I don't know. I don't know what the tax. What kind of revenue is brought into the city of Santaquin? But my business brings in approximately five million dollars a year. The person that was going to come in next to me, Castle Country RV, brought in about twenty million dollars a year. And so that's, that's a tremendous amount of tax base to bring in and to help facilitate that commercial area being developed. And on top of that, once that sewer is in that area. There was, it was brought up and stated that there was, I I'm completely off my, what I was going to talk about. So bear with me. But it was the, when I first purchased the property, the Green Halls, the first degree, because there's a Green Hall family that owned all the parcels. The reason why they told me that that was zoned commercial as you go further south, I don't have the correct one in front of me right there. But.
I don't think we go any farther south on your presentation, just showing, just showing your presentation.
At the back end of that, where it was zoned commercial all the way back, I mentioned to him, I says, I said, I said, Leslie, why, why is that commercial all the way back? I was just curious. And he said, he said, it was because my relative had a gravel pit back there, and so they wanted to put him in a commercial district. And so I was, oh, okay, okay. But in fact, my purpose, because I wanted commercial to bring in my business there. But outside of that, there is, there is, I've learned this at an Orem, my parents developed a piece of property off of State Street in Orem that could, that went, continued, continued back. Not nearly as far as this here, but the commercial people that they got back there. There was, it was car parts, car, I mean, it was, it was just became more of a junkyard. Of cleaning up and having to have people remove refriger, it's still refrigerators, because one's an appliance, work on appliance, stuff like that. But if you look at other communities, that that initial, the first part of that, of the commercial space is utilized. But if you get back in there, we don't have a road to turn around. You're really limiting yourself in what you can and can't do. But, and I'm jumping around, I apologize, guys. I'm not used to talking in this situation. But as the Rowley situation, as you look forward, is what happened in other communities that had fruits and agriculture areas and so on and so forth. That area will all be commercial. The frontage on the, on I fifteen, and it's, and it's just a matter of time before, before that happens. And that's, that's going to, that's going to happen within the next five to ten years if things continue the way they do. And they'll be gone. They won't, they won't, they won't be around for that. But in the meantime, this residents of Santaquin will be able to have some sort of tax base in the city that they can bounce back on. And it'll increase. I promise you, as soon as I come in and open my business right there, you'll have three or four or five or six, there's probably eight different pieces there. I know you're looking at probably five, but we have since looked at that because there's, there's a lot of commercial that can go in in that amount of property that's on there. Any number of businesses from whatever, but the point of bringing the sewer in that far, that'll facilitate all of that area to grow. But in the next four to five years, Green Halls in the, and that, that will probably be, that will be all run out by then. So his, his commercial gravel pit will be gone. And also the Rowleys within the next, I, it just depends on how fast the area grows in down below here, but they will sell out. They'll be gone. But in the meantime, the city residents will, they have a tax base that will at least generate the income. It will help facilitate and pay for a lot of the, of the Anyway, I appreciate talking to you, council. I hope you take a look at it, Mayor, and I Anyway, I appreciate talking to you, Council. I hope you take a look at it, Mayor, and I think it is good. I think it's a win-win for everybody around there. Even though the two Rowleys that wrote the letter, they don't know that. I think that deep down, they know that that is a correct thing because that's only going to help. It'll increase the value of their property. It'll help them with sewer being brought up to them and that whole area around there. Thank you, Councilman Mayor.
So we have another presenter. If you'd step up and indicate your name, please. That'd be great.
Thank you. Well, this is unusual. I've done this many times, but never on that little computer that's right there quite a ways away and really tiny people. Thank you, though, for hearing our proposal. Trent and his partners, Chris Olson and Chris and I have done a number of projects together. And that's how they came to find me and say, what would I have put on this property? What would it be that I would be interested in in maybe doing? So my company is Georgetown Development and we've been doing these types of projects in Utah County for about forty-one years from Payson to American Fork. We just haven't come all the way down to Santaquin until now. Now is is a great time to come to Santaquin and do this. In spite of somebody else that's going to do four hundred of them, we only need to do one hundred and seventy-eight over a period of several years. And I and I want to say they're not all townhouses that we're doing, but I'm also getting out of sync points a little bit in my presentation. I I want you to know that for our company, architecture is really a strong suit. It always has been mine. It's been my first love in development. So we like to say that architecture is a gift to the street. And if you look at your streets, gates and things like that, if you have good quality architecture, you really end up with great streets. I wanted to build projects to where when one of my homeowners looks out the their window and looks at their neighbor, they like their house every bit as much as they like their own house. So we try to build each house to, we we have a little mantra in our in our company and we've used it many times where no two homes are alike. So we try really hard through changes in architecture, color, and just the literal structure of the units that they look different. You don't see two homes that are alike. In this project that I'll start to show you more slides here in a second, it's it's been thrown around that it's high density. It certainly is. This this project, if you do the math on this, this is about five units of the acre, which is barely above a typical R one-ten subdivision. We can get maybe three point eight, sometimes if it's really efficient, four lots per acre. This is five. And you'll come to find, as I explained it, that we have a massive amount of open space. And you can see that that the the one slide that you're looking at right now. There's an awful lot of green there and I'll get into explaining what that is. So even though this is just a, not even though it's just, but it's a rezone request. It's not a project approval. But I'll get into quite a bit of detail here, maybe a lot more than we normally would on a rezone. But it's because it is a request for you to consider taking commercials area and down zoning it to residential. So I appreciate what the the difficulty in your decision. So I really do want you to know what you'd be getting if you rezon it because this is it. This is what we've spent probably eight months refining it. We've we've talked to Jason over those top different months to come up with what we have now. Could you advance it to the next slide? And probably the next. That was a slide we made just today to show and illustrate. I'm going to digress and talk about Trent's upfront. You can see that we've divided it into more areas. And if I can take just a second to continue to talk about that commercial, what we spent a lot of time in the office today looking at was how many different kinds of commercial businesses could go on that property? And dividing it into those eight spaces there probably could be even more. It's amazing how big that seventeen and a half acres is because we took using Google Earth, the Google Maps, we took a lot of the 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 types of retail and commercial projects that are in Payson and Spanish Fork and in Santaquin. And we said, how big are they and how would they fit? And it was pretty impressive that we could, out of maybe sixteen practical businesses from Arby's to Big O Tire, all different kinds of things, it fits in there really slick to where that area that has frontage that you can see from the highway is valuable for commercial and is practical. But as you go deeper into it, it gets less so. And that's what I want to talk about. Why? Why I'd like to build one hundred and seventy-eight houses in that in that space. Let's advance to the next slide, which really just keys on what I'm trying to do. You can see from the amount of green there that there's abundant landscaping and open space. And I'll come back to that, but I wanted just express that it's four different housing types, not just how differences in style, but they range from single-family homes to some townhomes to some large townhomes and some retirement ones at the bottom where that U is. I'll get to that in a minute. We'll talk about it. Next slide. Thank you.
You bet.
This is where I show that the parks that are that are in the project are distributed throughout the project and also as a buffer between the commercial, whatever that is to the south where Trent's trailers are and things. I've got a park that's intended to be a perimeter park there in Buffer as well as others. They the parks are placed around in the project so that they're close to the people who live in the different segments of the project. Each segment probably has access to two or three parks easily close to where they live. Could you advance it?
You bet.
There are ten of these parks. And so that's just our attempt to say one through ten, this is where the where these parks exist on the project. I'm going to now advance a slide and and just talk about each individual kind of product. Our project called Heirloom is a is a it's a project, a way of laying houses out that are really appealing to retirees and busy professionals. I don't like to limit it and say it's a fifty-five and older project because we really sell some of these to a busy professional, the guy and his wife or whatever that are both working. They like these as well. They have main floor master bedroom, so that appeals to retirees. And there are are there are only eighteen of them, which may prove to be not enough, but I thought eighteen down here in the South County, we probably can have easily find eighteen people that want to retire and live in this where that you every home also has a private fenced yard. Now, that's true of the entire project. So I'll keep repeating myself that every product that you see has a private fenced yard. They have, in in this case, most of the garage doors were hidden out of eighteen units. Six of them, you can see the garage door. The other twelve, the garage doors were hidden just because of the way it's laid out. It's laid out with with something we call a pinwheel, where kind of in the center and then the houses are out from the center where the garages are in the center. There's a large park in the middle with a pavilion in it and pavilions have proven to be probably the most popular kind of amenity that we can have in these kinds of projects where families get together and friends and they have picnics in there and they really do use the pavilion a lot. So there now we'll move on to the next few slides or just to show you that the type of homes and the way that they they look. We have four different styles of architecture. These are from past projects. And I'm not, yeah, I do have a slide that shows the current one. If you'd advance it to that one. And now the next slide. These are currently under construction in Provo. We've built this product in three other cities. And again, it's very well accepted. And I'd like to do it down here. Go to the next slide. And then this one just shows you where the fenced yards are. They're not huge, but in some cases, they're about half the size of this council room that you have here fenced in and perfect for a a table, umbrella, barbecue, and growing some tomato plants or something. Anyway, that's what all of our houses have these private fenced areas and we can advance to the next slide. And we'll go to the next one. We have a few in this project that we're proposing and we call them Concord Townhouses. A friend of mine in Georgia builds these and they're a larger townhouse, two-car garage on the on the main level, if you will, the ground level, and a two-car driveway in front. So automatically, these townhomes have four parking places per home. And nearby, we also have some additional additional guest parking also. No two of these will be alike. And let's advance and show you the the way that they look. It's not uncommon. We see it in each of our cities. Unfortunately, this layout that has garage doors in the front and a man door or your entry door right next to it, then another garage door, then another van door. And they're really boring. And when I found these that my friends building in Georgia, I just freaked out. I wanted to build these here because they look good. Go ahead and advance to the next one. A very strong architecture. Again, they don't even look like they're in many cases, they don't look like they're connected, but they the execution and architecture he did, we're just going to use it and copy them. Go ahead to the next slide. They all also have private backyards, fenced backyards. And that's probably all I could need to explain on that. These are our traditional townhouses that we have built in nearly every city from here to American Fork and then on in other states and and other areas areas of Utah. It's a tried and true product that's over thirty-five years old. They're extremely popular. We've we've built them. Now, these are bigger than we used to do. And some of these also have main floor masters. So they've appealed to people that are retiring as well. Most of these have two-car garages. Some of them have carports. The reason for that is both products sell. They're both very popular. We never have a situation where one with a carport outsells the other or vice versa. It's just needed. In other words, it truly can be the entry-level product. But a very nice product. They also look different. They also have fenced backyards. If you look closely between the garage and the house or in the backyard of the the ones that have carports, you have a fenced backyard again. It's just extremely important. It I felt all these years I've done it the same way. If you provide them a backyard, you don't end up with old sofas out the out the back door, so to speak, and that everybody can see. And it just makes it nicer if we provide fenced backyards for everybody. Let's move on and you'll see a few that we've built these. You probably have seen them in other than other cities. They're up the road in Salem. We built them in Payson and Spanish Fork and Springville everywhere. They're just a really tried and true product. No two of them are alike, even within the same project. We can make them look different. And that appeals to people. So let's go to the last group. Yeah, there's some these garden houses. We've had really good success with these in Pleasant Grove right now. They're a little bit smaller lot and but they're detached, single-family detached homes. All of them have a traditional backyard, side yards, things like that. We have three different distinct architectural styles for them and probably six or seven different floor plans. So that means that these roughly forty of these houses that are in here, no two homes will be alike. They'll all look different. They also have four parking places per home because, again, two-car garage and a driveway, a two-car driveway in front of it. And we'll move on to what they look like. And these are in Pleasant Grove. And it's hard with those little small, it's really hard to see the differences in the architecture, but we've got some new ones as well. Go ahead and advance it. And we have one-story ones as well as two-story. Now we'll do go to the next one. I mentioned that we have multiple park areas. I want to talk about the what that results in the project is we have a project that has forty-eight percent of the project as landscape space. That's rare, but kind of common in my project. And it's easier to achieve in this one because we were actually limited. We had it over two hundred and Jason called and said, John, you can only do one hundred and seventy-eight. So to me, that just opens it up for more parks. We have so much park area that if you'd advanced this, almost the last slide, I think a lot of our park area or some of it, we're going to do like Daybreak does where those park areas are considered meadow. It's not natural. It's not like open space that we'd leave natural with sagebrush or whatever we have in that area. But it's meadow, so you're not mowing it and you water it a little bit less and it and it really made sense in a big place like Daybreak. This is almost like a little miniature Daybreak in and of itself in that we have the different styles of houses and so much park and open area. Let's see. Yeah, well, we've got some pictures of of what Daybreak is. If you advance to the next couple of slides, you can kind of see the taller grass and and I hope it looks better to you guys on your computers and or TVs at home than it does of these tiny pictures I'm seeing. Go ahead and advance to the next one. But it really works well. You can have more open space and it looks like it's landscaped, but you don't have to maintain it and and mow it and things. Next couple of slides, just talk about parking. We go on a parking. We actually, on the overall project, have and and this slide shows where those parking places occur and it's a little tedious in the small size that you guys are dealing with. But if you go to the next slide, it simply says we have seven hundred and twelve parking places and one hundred and seventy-eight homes. So we end up with four parking places per unit over the entire project, no matter whether it's a townhome or a house that averages four. I'm used to building projects where we don't have this much land and we are trying to make it work at two and a quarter, two and a half, Provo standards, I think, two and a half now. We have four. Go to the next slide, which kind of talks about land use in here. Here again, it's too small. And if it was on a giant screen, you could read in the bottom right-hand side the percentages and the acreages. But generally, what you see there in the bright green is the landscaped area. And as I said, that's forty-eight percent. When you add in the other areas that are usually considered to be open space besides landscape space, we have those private backyards that are still, though they're fenced, they're open, there's no building on it. And the driveways and the walkways to the project, when you add it all up, we have sixty-five percent of our project is open space. I'm just going to make a case, I guess, here at the end that unlike high density, this is very open and heavily landscaped with parks all through it. There's not that many people living there. They're certainly not crammed in there. They have their own parks. I don't really, we we're going to build a wall around the whole project. It's a six-foot concrete wall that looks like stone. It's very nice and we're using it in almost all our projects. When we put that around the project and have inside our project as many parks as we do and places to go and hang out, I don't see him needing to climb over the wall, like I'm talking about the kids or something, and head into an orchard or head into any of the commercial stuff. We we have enough internally. We have a clubhouse, several pavilions. I'm trying to go fast because I don't want to take all your night. But anyway, that's our presentation. That's really, I think, the last slide. If you go to it, it's just the whole, oh, that was, that's kind of a phasing. How we would fade it. So it looks like Meiko wafers. They're all those different colors of Easter. But it's just for us to define what areas we could start and when we could start it. And we'll leave that slide up, I think, for questions. If anybody has a question, I would be happy to answer. And that this slide just is an aerial view of if we.
Sorry, let me let me go back.
Look at anything like the bigger view. We've got it.
I didn't intend to go to those last two, but.
That's okay.
Good to know that.
Generally, questions are directed to the sad slide.
Okay, it sounds like they're done with their presentation, Mayor.
I just want to say one thing.
Oh.
I took a.
Maybe no.
The the other guys talked about your land use. And there's a lot. I mean, your general plan is humongous and I I went through a lot of it. And it's interesting when they were saying that different guidelines that you have. I don't know. Can they see something like this if I? They can't see it. They're they're just looking at the, well, what I'm holding up is your guidelines and land use element and and some of the other sections in here that I've highlighted. I kept finding that we were in I kept finding that we were in congruence with it or in, you know what I mean? We were thinking the same as you on the land use. And I don't want to go through all that right now, but I could. I mean, guideline six, guideline eight, guideline eleven, fourteen. One of the neatest things is your community vision. There's this little paragraph right here. That says it's to provide a small town atmosphere with well-planned and organized growth. You guys know what that is? I highlighted that and highlighted it because I thought there are six things that I see in this. That are six things in your vision statement that are virtually the same as mine. Well-planned and organized. I think we're there. Those are two of them. Family oriented. Yep, that's what the project is. A great place to live. We think it is because of the way we design it. Have good parks. That was interesting because obviously we have a lot of parks. And then it says a strong business tax base. That's what Trent really wants to do. He doesn't, he doesn't care that much about what's going on back here that I would do. But I care a lot about it and I like my projects that turned out well in every other city where we've done it. And so I'm happy that Trent called me. And now I can answer any questions.
Hey, counsel, any questions?
I have a question, Mayor. He talked about bringing his business here, Mr. Mulhoff, his trailer business, RV business. Where would that be? Is there any idea where that would be as part of this?
Yes, that will be on the, the very north side.
So if you look and see on what's on the screen now, commercial one, five acres, that's, that's, that's what he's, that's what he envisions.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I have a question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
So on Trent. With your business, is your business moving to Santaquin then? Will we be your main?
Absolutely. Yes, I will shut down the Springfield lot and I will come exclusively over here. Like I say, if my son wasn't in the business, I wouldn't be doing that at this point in my life and career. But because he's going to continue it, yes, I would. Yeah. So as soon as it was built, I would then move my whole facility over and then all the tax. Based generated, sales tax revenue generated from the cells would be, the point of sale would be Santaquin.
So if I'm, if I may on that, Mayor and, and Councilmember Miller. That, should this go to a, to a table and have us work on a development agreement or, and or when a development agreement comes forth. That could be, certainly be something that could be put into, I believe, a development agreement that, that would indicate that he plans on doing that a certain period of time or. Something of that nature. So that, that, I think that's something that's a, a good point, Councilman Miller.
And actually, if they wanted the tax base sooner than that, when I talked with. The previous, it was Dennis, was it? Dennis Barker? There was talk of, he would even allow it to be mobile until the actually was built because they wanted the tax. They wanted the revenue. They wanted to put it self, right, as soon as possible.
I'm, I have another question, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
So on the commercial lot number one, if we were to consider this, would you, would you consider putting that? Concrete, concrete fence along that north wall? So it would tie in with, with the, the residential side and then bring it out as far to the street as you could?
Yeah, I would look at that for sure. I mean, one of the things that I like about being out here at Santaquin is the visibility. Because it used to be in Springfield, you could put something out on the side of the road. And people from the freeway could see it. But now you've got all the concrete barriers and everything going down through there that. People's focus is going, is not down, going down the road. But once you get out to here in Payson. Then if you don't have those concrete barriers in here, it's broad. So I wouldn't want to take away from. From that, that view, you know what I mean? If it came out too far, but I think, I think to the end of the orchards, definitely, because I don't think that impacts the view.
Yeah, I, I agree. So you, on, on one of the later slides, it's, that was said, that was. Drawn up today with the eight or eleven different commercial lots. Do you have, do you have other businesses? Not, not you specifically, but do you? Have any leads or ideas of other, other companies who are interested in coming out here as soon as this is ready as well?
Oh, yes, absolutely. It's funny that you asked that question because I had, I had a friend of mine that kind of.
I think we lost you after I had a friend of mine.
Looks like Norm's computer possibly is frozen.
Okay, hang on a second. Let me, let me see if I can stop sharing and I'll share again, see if we can figure this out. Sorry, guys. How about now?
Yes, we see the screen.
We hear Trent then?
Yeah, I can hear. Yes. I said I had a friend who I kind of tutored into the business and he only started his business like five, six years ago and he was up.
It did again.
He's gotta stop sharing the screen. We can, we can go without the screen for a minute.
Okay, go ahead, Trent.
Anyway, I, I tutored a, a young man who got into the RV business five, six years ago. He's very, very successful. He was up to doing twenty, twenty-five million dollars a year. But since this, during this timeframe, the last, I don't know how long it's been, John?
Six months.
Six months or so. He, he just sold his business. Otherwise, he was coming right next door to me. But in answer to that question also, Paul Phillips at Strawberry Bay Marina, he's got a couple lines of boats. And I've talked with him and he wanted a commercial space to come down to, to also, to show his, and have a boat lot. I've also talked with Karen at Tish, Tishner a couple of times. At Tishner Ford. And so I think at some point in time, and I could be wrong, but I know that in past, the, the Ford dealership is mentioned, they may pull that dealership from it because they want them out. From the, they want the new facility out on the highway. And so I've talked with her a couple of times also. So and as to your question, yes, I do have. I've got three or four. And as soon as one, as soon as one, as soon as I go in there. I would bet you within the next, within the next year, there would be two or three more. They would just go boom, boom.
Okay, I have a statement I'd like to make if I could.
Go ahead, Ben.
I'm gonna actually share my screen really quick, if that's all right. And. First of all, I really appreciate the Planning Commission taking the time to study the general plan and to put forth their, their comments to the city council. Certainly, the Planning Commission, their role as advisory committee is to dive deep into the general plan and see how. Any potential development might mess with the general plan or be inconsistent with the general plan. It's important enough that the last update or the general plan version that they're going off of is two thousand and twelve. And, and also within the general plan is, is the discussion of the creation of a tax base. I think their points are very well taken when it comes to maintaining an agrarian community. And when it comes to having uses that are not inconsistent with our, our agricultural producers of the area. Some other things to consider in the development of the Harvest View at two forty-two complex. Or, or basically an agritourism type business is the fact that we do, through such an agritourism type business, want to draw. Other commercial uses. It's not that we don't want any commercial and make it all agriculture. What it really is, is that the commercial would support the agriculture, meaning. That we would have instead of just maybe, a, a, just a regular restaurant, chain restaurant, maybe it's a, a restaurant type that, that supports the fork to, or the field to fork. Farm to fork type of, of foods that they offer. Maybe instead of just a steakhouse, it's a Maddox type steakhouse, that type of thing. Other uses would be hotels that would support tours of our agricultural community. Tours of the Red Barn and, and Young Living and, and Howling's Tomatoes and, and even Nelson's Greenhouse. We have a great agricultural base and that's the vision of two forty-two. However, with that vision of two forty-two, we have some obstacles, just like we had with the grocery store. We had some significant traffic considerations to take into, in place. We had an intersection had five legs and it needed a light and we had to, to open up that whole area through the accumulation of parcels into one larger parcel and having roads that would connect into them. Well, one of the issues that Mr. Mulhoff brought up in the beginning of his presentation is that. A significant barrier for bringing in agritourism type businesses in this area is sewer. In fact, the Red Barn itself has, has talked to us about a desire to bring in sewer. So that they could expand their, their tours and have a demonstration themselves, very similar to the demonstration type. Work that has been done down in Beaver with the Beaver cheese. Dairy down there. And so having something that brings in sewer that doesn't tax our current businesses nor tax our residents is something to consider. Having synergistic use, when we approved the grocery store, the grocery store was approved with some residential development just to the north that provided a buffer between. The residential and the commercial and allows homeowners to be able to come within walking distance to utilize those services. And so having a synergistic use with the Red Barn and, and those who might come in, in, and. Purchase ice cream and, and fruit and meats and flowers, flour and things like that. They would be within walking distance. So that's something to consider as well. But the point that I wanted to bring out the, was a question that was posed by one of our council members, which is. How much commercial ground do we have within Santaquin? Because that is a legitimate concern. Are we going to lose the commercial ground? For a residential purpose? And we see in the, the towns subdivision that was approved just a few minutes ago. It had residential that surrounded commercial. And if you could see what their, if you could lift the curtain, if you will, and see what their thoughts and their plans are within that commercial area. You could see that their design of parking and their entry points really lends itself to a walkable community that could utilize and draw. More commercial synergistic right next to co-located with the high density that's coming in with the towns. And so you also have to look at it in comparison to the commercial uses that would be. Adjacent to this residential use. And one of the things I, I'd like to applaud. That Trent and, and John with their development is, they actually have planned in it RV parking. And that's one of the concerns we've had elsewhere in our community is that we don't have any place to, to put our toys and Santaquin loves its toys. And if you look on their, their plans, they have a, a parking lot just for RVs. For the residents of their neighborhood that is directly backing up to Mr. Mulhoff's quality or proposed site for his quality RV. So it's, it's a, it's a nice buffer between personal, people's personal RVs and the ones that are for sale. It's, it's probably beneficial to him to have customers that might purchase his, his goods and it's beneficial to the residents who might have a place to park it. So the real question really comes down to, the Planning Commission sees things very specifically. And we appreciate them doing that. They look at the general plan and, and look at the, the general plan and how it fits with general uses. But the city council has to look at things from a different vantage point. What does a tax base mean to Santaquin City? How does that allow us to provide more fire trucks and more police cars and more ambulances and more staff and personnel to, to take care of the needs of our residents? We have a state of the art fire department, paramedic certified, and that's, that's better than. Any of our neighboring communities all the way to, it used to be Provo, it's now Springfield. And so it, it says quite a bit about the investment that our elected leaders make into our city staff. And to the services it provides, the essential services, the water, the sewer, the, the fire, the police that we provide to our residents. And, and yet all of that comes at a cost and without a commercial tax base, that cost is borne by residents. For many years, we've had a desire. In fact, I've been here a little over ten. And the number one question was, when are we gonna get a grocery store? And we're very happy to report that it's gonna be in June. But for ten years, nobody believed us that we were working on it. The next largest question is, when are we gonna get a, a high school? And, and a high school will only come when we have a certain number of elementary schools and a certain population of students. That only comes with rooftops. And so you can't have one without the other. And it's really hard to sit back and say, well, we want to have agritourism. We want to have people come and purchase our goods, but then we don't want people. You have to look at it as a balance. And so from a city council's perspective, they have to look at it from a ten thousand foot level. And see what is the best marriage? I'm not saying that this development should go forward or shouldn't. It's completely legislative and it's up to you. But the question was asked, how much commercial ground do we have? And in Santaquin today, we have different types of commercial. We have what's called the C-one zone, which is a hundred percent commercial use. And then we have several other zones that are partially, they could either be a hundred percent commercial. MSR could be a hundred percent residential or, or combination thereof. So it's either partial. But right now we have two hundred and twenty-two acres, two hundred and twenty-two point two-nine acres of C-one. And of that, a hundred and seventy-eight of those acres are vacant or eighty percent of our commercial ground in our community today. And that's not taking into consideration any annexations that might come in the future. But say eighty percent of our commercial ground today lies vacant. It is really not producing any tax base for our community. When you add into it the other potential zones for commercial. Additionally, three hundred and fourteen acres could be added to our community as, as far as commercial uses. Of which there's two hundred and nine acres of vacant or sixty-seven percent. So in total, we're about seventy-two percent vacant of the potential use of commercial ground. And it begs the question, how fast are we using our commercial ground today? Right now in Santaquin, and, and I just used the last ten years. It's an easy round number, especially since I started ten years ago. Is what, what developments have come in that have created a tax base for our community in the last ten years? And over that ten-year period, we've had Apex Storage, five point three-four acres. Dairy Queen, just under an acre, Krabby's To Go, just a half an acre, and the Central Valley Medical Center. And that means we've only used seven point six oh-six acres of commercial ground over that ten-year period. Now, because of the number of developments that have come in and because demand is ever increasing, the ratio is starting to pick up. We do have right now several that are under development. We have our grocery store phase one, that's six and a half acres. The Snell's storage units on the east side at three point one-one acres. The Cherry Dance Studio, which was just approved, that is a dance studio that'll be next to the Apex Storage Units. That's one point five-nine acres. And there's a proposal for some commercial units between the Dairy Queen and, and Stringham's at point seven-one acres. That means under development right now, we have nearly twelve acres that are being developed. And when you consider how much was developed in a ten-year period, you can see that the pace is increasing. And that's great. It's great for our residents. And it's a combination of a couple of things that have generated that. One, we have a council and I appreciate, appreciate our council and our past councils, but we have a council that's very active at. It's working to bring businesses in, which is evident by their Macy's coming in, was, which was announced yesterday on Facebook. And we, we just extend so much appreciation to our council to try to remove barriers. And that, the road system, they would have had to put in nearly eight hundred thousand dollars worth of roads just to open up their store. And so working with them to offset the cost of that road system by investing in our own roads. Not giving them any cash or any money or any tax proceeds, but investing in our own roads. Removed fifty percent of a barrier to entry to allow that grocery store to come in. And that'll have a, a payback of about twenty-four months, just anticipated with, with the projections of, of the sales locally within that grocery store. So that's a great, one of the great reasons why we even have that commercial development is because we have a progressive council that is thinking about the tax base of our residents. And thinking about how to meet the needs and, and provide a higher level of service for the residents than they currently enjoy. And then it can only come through, through a tax base. The second reason that we have an increase in our commercial demand is because of rooftops. Many times, Mr. Horlocker, who was in the room just a few minutes ago, with representing Summit Ridge Communities with the. Town, the townhome development from Summit Ridge. Had said, I've got these businesses, they're, they're ready, they're looking and whatnot, but we don't have enough rooftops. As soon as we have this number, then they'll look at us. As soon as we have that number. And one of the concerns that he has is that most cities have a three hundred and sixty-degree draw. Meaning that if they plant a grocery store here, they're pulling from all sides. meaning that if they plant a grocery store here, they're pulling from all sides. Santaquin is unique in that we are on the edge of the Wasatch Front. And basically, we have a hundred and eighty degree draw, meaning that we our residents go north, but don't typically go south. And so and so it's always been a very a challenge for him to market his commercial ground. And Mr. Horlocker has over two hundred acres of commercial ground surrounding exit two forty-two as well. So long story short, right now, we have either developed or in development over the last ten years, eighteen point nine seven acres or less than five percent of our our commercial ground. And while I completely respect that we do not want to just move forward with a shortsightedness and that we don't want to approve something that that we're going to regret in the future. I do want us to take into to great consideration what is the highest and best use of that ground either now or into the future? Clearly, we have a lot of prime ground that is right on the freeway, right on the frontage, even Mr. Mulhoff's commercial ground fronts fronts three hundred west there, the Mona Road over by the Red Barn fronts that. And that lot, that ground will fill in much more quickly than what would go deep. And so it's not a question of do we want this development or do we want this Walmart? Or do we want this development? Or are we going to get this hospital? Maybe that's a decision of, do we want this development or do we want this hospital in twenty years? Or this Walmart in 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 ten or something like that? So it's really, if you're looking at it in the short term and trying to meet the budgetary needs of our community, it is, do we want to have this development or do we want to leave it vacant? And and then that is a conscious decision to say, leaving this ground vacant is really putting it into the bank for a potential use in the future. But it is falling back to what's in our code. A potential use could be something higher and better, and we could be all excited about having a new, you know, IHC Hospital or something like Spanish Fork is getting. But we also could sit back and and his Mr. Mulhoff just mentioned. I my last city was Leverickan and we did have you know, plenty of commercial ground that was occupied by wrecked cars and and auto used auto parts. So you you gotta be careful what you wish for. And you also need to make sure that you have good neighbors so that good neighbors draw better neighbors and and the community elevates as a whole. I'm not saying what you should or shouldn't do. I completely respect if the council thinks that that we should maintain the the commercial ground. But I did appreciate this question coming from a council member to give you maybe a little bit different vantage point and a different set of eyes that perhaps the planning commission didn't see when recognizing that, one, we have several hundred thousand dollars worth of sewer that we would not have to put in in order to support exit two forty-two for development for harvest view. It would support the agricultural business. And two, we do have a surplus, not a scarcity, a surplus of commercial ground today. That may not always be in the future. That's all I'll say.
Thank you, Ben. Any other questions, counsel?
I don't have a question, but I'd like to make a comment.
Make it a good one, then.
Well, I don't know how good it'll be, but I I mean, I I've listened to a really good proposal tonight from these guys and I and I I appreciate what everything Ben said. But I I look at it from the point of view of we're taking, you want to take a commercial part out and put in residential down there. And to me, that just opens up a slippery slope. Because the next landowner over is going to want to do the exact same thing now. And using the frontage road as the commercial side of it and using the backs as of as residential. Once you, once you get residential started there, you know, as well as I do residential, the rest of developers are going to want the same thing down there. So my feeling is is Santaquin has one area out there that is dedicated to commercial. So I appreciate, you know, this, you know, the trader idea and all that stuff. But to me, that's what it's about, is bringing in businesses and commercial. And residential, to me, don't fit in that in that area. It's a beautiful presentation and what he's done there, but I don't feel for that area. Me, that area needs to stay commercial. That's just me.
I agree.
It'll make it for a while. So do Ben or Norm, do you have an overview map of Summit Ridge there? That shows this proposal and the towns and that their proximity?
Let me show you a couple of maps. First, I I'll try to open up a web map here just secondly, share the screen. Okay, so this right here was actually part of that same memo on commercial. This is our commercial land today, green being vacant and red being occupied commercial space within our community. And let me, and and if you were to look at that, the town's is right here. Actually, this right here is our soccer fields. And look, hey, right here, here's our soccer fields, the state of Utah shaped parcel. And this right here is called the SAQ property. The towns would be coming in right here. And this is Mr. Mulhoff's property right here with commercial on the front and residential in the back and then commercial the with the the gravel pits in the back. Can you see my mouse moving around? Okay. I can zoom in on that if that makes it easier. Let me zoom in a little. Okay, so this is exit two forty-two. All of the screen is future commercial, which could be agritourism, it could be hotels, restaurants, it could be all sorts of things, but clearly creating a tax base. But this right here is the Utah shaped parcel where the soccer fields have been developed right here. We own thirty-five acres. It is a future potential transit oriented development. So someday in the future, and it's probably many decades out, frontrunner would come down here, providing for what's called a TOD, which would have residential and commercial components. This is the town's higher density development right here, which would have a commercial front end. And then all of this being commercial and all along the frontage road being commercial, what's proposed is right here. And Mr. Hathaway does make some a very good point, you know. You have to decide how you want to use that property and you only get to decide at once, right? So. Mary, we can't hear you.
Any other comment?
Yeah, I I love everything about this this development. Like Dave said, I I think they've done a fantastic job laying it out. I I really like the open space idea, the just everything about it, the homes. I think it it fits what we want in Santaquin. But because of the comments that have been made tonight, I I would like a little more time to look at it. I'd like to to take the staff's recommendation on maybe tabling it and looking at it a little bit longer. That's how I'm feeling right now.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilman Mekum, are you willing to? I'm ready to entertain a motion if you'd like to make it.
Mayor and councilman, might I just ask one question? Is there any direction the council would have from us from tabling it? Meaning, is there certain aspects of information you would like us to do any research on? Would you like us to put to to invest the time and energy into a development agreement or no, or just terms of a development agreement? Is there areas? And maybe you can't answer that tonight. Maybe you have questions over the next several days and you want to send them to us. And we can do more research like I did on the question with regard to commercial, but Councilman Mekum, if you if you want to put anything like that in your motion or any other council members, if you have any direction or advice for us so that we don't just table without without direction?
I, if I may, I would agree. I I would also be in favor of tabling in order to work on getting a development agreement. I would feel more comfortable having that in place. And so that's the direction I would give is to table and then work on the details of a development agreement. I I love that the that the commercial is on the frontage. If if the proposal were all high density, I would not be in favor of it. If it were all housing without any commercial component, I would not be in favor of it. But and and I have spent several hours over the last week, many hours researching and and asking questions and and reading and studying. And I still would just like some more time and and I would I would like to direct staff to work on a development agreement so we have more details.
Okay, thank you. Detail wise, can we can we look at timing? Can that be part of the proposal, the agreement? I think that's important to us is when can this happen? I think any other thoughts on that, counsel?
I think it would be important to know, we talked about the the RV cell business coming in, when that would be part of the development if we could. Because I think that's important if we're going to have, if we approve the development that that we have the the commercial part of that as soon as possible. At least that's my feeling.
And mayor, may I offer another thought? Not specifically in regards to this particular development or proposal, but in general, the number one reason that cities exist is to provide services to the residents of that city. In order to provide services to the residents of that city, money is required. Proceeds from sales tax, income, revenue is required. The cost of those services continue to increase. And and as a council, we, at least those of us who I I I don't know how, I won't speak for Dave and Jen and and how much they how much they have thought about this, but but I know in previous discussions over the last two years, there has been a lot of discussion about how can we increase our sales tax base? How can we draw additional businesses to our city to help increase the revenue without raising taxes on our residents for for services that the city provides? And 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 I think that that we have a responsibility as elected officials to very carefully review and consider all of those options. And not just not turn away commercial business because it has a housing component and not just approve a housing component because it has a business. We've got to really think carefully about about how we use the land in our city because, as has already been mentioned, some of those decisions are are final. And and so again, you know, thinking about those services and looking at our budget and and the 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 city is in is in very strong financial shape. So I don't want to even go close to suggesting that we're in trouble financially and we can't afford to provide services. That's not what I'm suggesting because we are in very strong financial shape. But the fact is that the cost of those services continue to increase. So we have to, we have to look into the future and and try to make decisions as best we can based on the knowledge that we have at the time and knowing that those decisions are going to impact generations to come. And yeah, that's my thought. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question for Trent. Can you hear me, Trent? Hey, if this doesn't get approved, what, any idea on what your plans are going to be for the future?
Honestly, I would probably I've been paying commercial taxes on it for five years since I've owned it. So that that gets expensive. And so what I'd probably do, because I can't afford to put the infrastructure in that the, you know, in order for me to put my business there. I would stay in Springville. I would probably just put it back in the greenbelt and then charge the rollies for driving the road and the green holes. I'm just teasing.
I knew you were.
To be honest with you, I would just, I would sit on it. And I just wouldn't do anything. But that's, that's the the point that I would make is that it gives the city an opportunity to generate revenue for the next. And who know, we don't have a crystal ball to know exactly when that timeframe is going to to be. It might be five years, it might be ten years. If you consider the growth of what's happening, the growth of what is happening, I think it's going to be sooner rather than later. But then I believe that when that time comes and those rooftops are here, which they're coming in, if you got four hundred and fifty coming in right down there. The rollies will, what's that, what's that land is worth so much money, they're gone. They're not going to stay here. Same with greenhouse. In three or four, four years, when all that that gravel's gone, he's gone. So I think it gives, I think it's a win-win for everybody because it gives it gives the city the tax revenue and that will be, I believe that commercial will be filled in extremely fast.
So Trent, if I could maybe interject just a little bit, I I would think it's probably the the feeling of the council and the community that we want to do everything we can so that the rollies are not gone in in five, five to ten years, that we are bringing in agritourism businesses and synergistic uses to to increase the amount of traffic they have through their front door. More tours, more everything. And and actually, to tend it to your credit and the other direction, you have an RV sales, they're beginning to allow RVs to park in their their yard because it brings people on tours of their facility. So I I I think while it's very possible that the value of their property would go up and in future generations, other rollies may decide to sell and and every farmer has that right and they're, they have to make decisions for themselves. I think it would be our goal and certainly the goal of the general plan to do everything we can to increase their business. And and hopefully your business would help to do that, not to put them out of business because because the value of their property is now too high.
The only reason why I say that, I say that tongue in cheek only that I grew up picking cherries in Orem in the orchards of Skinner's Orchards. And they're they're nowhere to be found. Those orchards are all gone, Irkenbrack's, they're all now, you know, they go, they go.
They're here.
How it evolves. But that could be ten, twenty years down the road, so.
Well, and and to your point to that, you're right, the 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 rollies, the Irkenbrack's and others who were in Orem relocated because the value of property in Orem went up, they relocated here to Santaquin. We're kind of looking at it from a different point of view. We don't want them to uproot and leave. And the way you do that is by increasing business for them by by creating a harvest view at two forty-two vision where kind of like the Oregon Fruit Loop or Hershey, Pennsylvania, or Tillamook Cheese Factory, we are bringing more and more people here for no other reason, because they want to have the experience of, you know, for me, I like to go to Maddox. I love to get a good steak up in in Perry, Utah. I go out of my way to time it. If I'm going to drive north to go to Perry, Utah to to get myself a steak, I have to hit there at lunch or dinner, right? We want Santaquin to be that that same type of destination here. And and you know what? It's the RV type customers that you have that we want to invite here to our community. So there's more synergy than we might think. But I think it's because we want to keep the rollies for many years to come.
I probably spoke, I spoke out of of context. I was just speaking from experience, so that experience in my lifetime and seeing the transfer of that happening and seeing that happen.
Property values, yes.
But I I think we talked about that today when we were talking, is it would be great to have Maddox come right next to them or where they have a little farm area next to them with good hometown food and you got cattle right? I mean, that's, that's great. I go to Maddox all the time, too.
Me, too.
I'm sorry, mayor, we didn't hear you.
Are there any other comments?
Hey, mayor, if I be, I I concur with Ben. I I think it's important to point out the the general plan, which has been brought up before. I think if if this is something that could threaten agricultural, then then it might be a a concern to have, but I I think the general plans. a a concern to have, but I I think the general plan speaks in a way that that doesn't necessarily tell you exactly what you need to do. It's it's more of a a here's some things to to weigh and and consider and and I think there's there's uses outside of of agriculture that that can can work in harmony with agriculture. I think it's also worth noting, as we're talking about, you know, direction moving forward, Mr. Dester had mentioned that he he coordinated with me on on the design of their development. There's a number of things that we have in place that that do protect the agricultural land in in Santaquin City, particularly in relation and and proximity to a PUD. So for instance, and and Mr. Dester didn't mention this, but the the very northern section of his his property, he showed us Phase X. And what he means by that is that because of the provision in our code that says that that development can't happen within 150 feet of a a current agricultural business, they would, they would hold off on that particular plat until such time that they would, they would be in harmony with that provision. So we have a number of things that are are in place that if this were to move forward, that hopefully it could work in harmony with with agricultural uses and 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 protect what's happening there. But but I I concur with Ben. I think if if this were to to harm that agricultural, that that actually, I could confidently say that that is contrary to our our general plan, but so I I think I think you need to be careful to to indicate that this might run agriculture out of town. That's that's completely in opposition of what what the general plan says and what I think the the feeling of of Santaquin City is. So that's, that's something important to keep in mind is is we do want to do things that are going to preserve and help support our agricultural, but that doesn't necessarily mean that other land uses can't work in harmony with that and be compatible in proximity to those agricultural uses.
I I think what I'm hearing is the council needs more time. The council needs more data, more information to consider. And probably the shell, at least if nothing else, if not a complete development agreement, so that you really are talking about specific items, specific pieces, and you can say, yes, we like this, no, we don't like that. And that could be the next step forward in your consideration, whether whether you even consider to approve or not, but it it's maybe a little bit nebulous right now that you don't have enough information or that there's enough visibility because the the language isn't in front of you. And that we would work on that during this time of table.
Okay, anything else?
I would agree to that. I would agree with that, the statement that Ben just made and and I would also agree with the statement that Jason made is that I I've said before, we need to do everything we can to prevent, to protect the growers in our, in our city. And I, I I also have concern with with even the the suggestion that additional development will run the growers out because that defeats what what we're trying to accomplish.
Yeah, I agree.
All right. Thank you. Are we ready for a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we table, which item was this?
Um, 9B.
That we table item I 9B, a consideration of a rezone of the Melhoff, 35 acres of Melhoff property from C1 to an R10 PUD in order to further study the issue and allow staff to work with the developer and the landowner to create a development agreement, which they will then bring back to council at a later date.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Montoya. Do we have a second?
I'll second it, Mayor.
We have a second by Councilman Miller. Any further discussion on this ordinance? All right, Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Councilman Hathaway?
No.
Councilmember Montoya?
Aye.
Councilman Mikan?
Aye.
And Councilmember Bowman?
Um, I mean, I'm, my opinion is not going to change. I'm about no either way, but can table it, I guess, but I don't agree with changing the zoning at all. So I guess that's a no for me. If you guys want more time to talk about it, that's fine, but it's not really going to change my opinion on this particular stance. I'm just being honest.
Okay. Thank you. That passes. So we'll table that that one there. Okay, we'll move on to item 9C, discussion possible action regarding proposed landscape improvements on the northeast corner of 4th East and Main Street on city-owned property.
Mayor and council, we we showed the layout in our last meeting for the improvements of the corner of 4th East and Main Street, that is city-owned property. It used to be where the leg of Orchard Lane came into and where the Jersey barriers are currently located across from Sinclair Gas Station. And that is our front porch. That is our, you know, beautiful entrance to a new 32-acre development. And what is proposed out there is is, and I don't have the picture right in front of me, Jason, I'm not sure if you can pull that up and then maybe we'll switch and share screens. But I don't have, I have a picture of the clock tower that we have proposed. But the landscaping would basically provide for improved landscaping area, seating area, trail connectivity and an arbor clock tower. And I'm going to go down to the pictures of the clock tower. What we're proposing is the clock tower on the left and some other clock towers neighboring in the area. Pleasant Grove has that green one there and Gunnison has the red one on the right. But what what we're proposing is is the clock tower on the left being a smaller one, more like Gunnison, a 30-foot, not a 40-foot like Pleasant Grove, but be built on a larger base, a much higher base, kind of a pedestal type of look, having a welcome sign to Santaquin and and allowing for future potential businesses. If businesses come in that so choose to have outdoor eating areas, that they would be able to be able to abut the city park area and have outdoor seating and eating areas for restaurants that might be in the neighborhood or if nothing else, it's it's just a just a nice inviting entry and landscape area to our commercial development. This has been a project within our parks master plan for many years. And we have a bid back from the bids back and the RNO Construction, who's currently the contractor onsite building the Macy's Grocery Store, has given us a bid of $261,245, which is significantly less than our own project budget that we had to put in as far as the Parks and Trails Master Plan, which was 571,000 is what we thought. With that 261,000, if they are selected and if this is approved before May 1st, because they already are onsite and it wouldn't require any special mobilization, they're just moving from one location to another. That would save and reduce that cost by $18,365.50. That would bring the cost to 242,879. Also, it's important to note that the first $50,000 of the costs are paid for pursuant to the agreement with the Ridley's Development. And so the direct cost to the city is actually 192,879.50. That is park impact fee eligible. And we currently have 584,829 in our park impact fee fund. And so there's a sufficient amount for this project as well as the other high priority project that the council discussed in its budget planning meeting earlier this year, which was to provide lighting to the baseball fields over by Orchard Hills Baseball Park. In in the, what that number does not include is the cost of the tower. And it does not include the cost of a welcome sign. And it's important to know on a welcome sign, we we really like to get some community input. One of my favorite projects I ever worked on as a city manager was the development of of the Laverkin City Welcome Sign. And we had a lot of community involvement and it's, it's a very unique sign in that it follows what they call architecture. It's near Zion's National Park. Except instead of the standard columns and and going across, Laverkin is known for its bridge. There's a bridge into Laverkin that that James Bond flew under in in the movie Octopussy. And and that bridge is actually built into the sign and the letters are backlit. So at night, when you drive through, you can't see the sign, but you can see the community's name hovering. It's a very beautiful sign and it came out looking great and it had a lot of community involvement. Because the clock manufacturer is affected right now by the COVID-19, their 90-day lead time is probably going to be closer to about six months. And so they would be able to provide us the cost estimates or the the design elements for the pedestal. And we would be able to incorporate that into the RNO contract. But the clock would come in much later after the store has had its grand opening and the clock could be set into place. And likewise, during that same interim period, we could work with the community on the development of a new welcome sign that hopefully isn't tucked behind a tree like our current one is along Main Street. So Jason, I'm not sure if you have any other information you want to share or the layout. I'll stop sharing my screen. And and information on the clock.
Yes, so is, can you see that plan?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so as as Ben indicated, yeah, this is, this is a fairly consistent with what's with what's been in the the Parks Master Plan for years and years. In fact, it's probably refined and and probably close to $300,000 less than than the way it's shown in the the Parks Master Plan. So budget's obviously a a huge consideration here and we want to make sure that that we're mindful of that. However, this is the the entrance, the gateway to our community. So it's, it's, you know, we want to make sure we do this right and it's going to look great and 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 be something that looks nice for years and years to come. As Ben mentioned, I I've been coordinating with with Verden Clocks. They're they're out of Cincinnati, Ohio. As you know, Ohio's got some really strict regulations right now in their state, so they are basically shut down and 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 locked down their their facilities. I spoke with him this morning very early. He was calling me Eastern time and and I was still sleeping. But we we talked for a bit and and he said that it's looking like like their facilities will be able to get up and running again, but as Ben indicated, there's still a lead time for for them to to be able to to get the the clock manufactured. He's he's provided a couple of different options. And I should say, we we asked for a couple of different options and he provided us those cost estimates. What we've, we've looked at, I think what we're leaning towards right now, the the clock tower that you see on the plan on your screen right now is is the one that is in Gunnison, Utah. That's a 30-foot tall tower. The other clock tower that you saw in in the memo that Ben had up was the one in Pleasant Grove and that's a 40-foot tall tower. The difference between those two towers would be about $25,000. So what we've talked about and and what we think would 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 really help enhance the tower, but but also keep in mind cost projections is to go with a 30-foot tower, but provide maybe five to six-foot pedestal, the base of it, that would really dress up the bottom of it. Instead of it just being four posts into the ground, it would have a little bit more bulk at the bottom and and could be have a nicer facade with brick or something like that to to give a little bit more weight to the base of the tower. And and there's things that we can do to to help save costs on the clock tower. Obviously, we'd still be paying for the pedestal base to be put in in place, but that's, that would be probably our recommendation at this time. There's a few other costs that we looked into. There's a little bit of detail on the clock that that would would be like $2,500 to to get rid of and not a a huge cost savings there as well as as a let's see, there was another element that we'd asked about. And 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 I should say that this clock tower is not proposed to have any bells. It's not going to chime. There's, you know, you can see the bells in in the Gunnison Tower, but those are actually faux bells that don't chime, but they have the look of a a bell tower. So we we've been, we've been very mindful of budget and and we've tried to to balance that. And and so, you know, Ben has provided in his in his memo that the cost projections there. And we would look at at possibly 115 to 120,000 for the clock tower itself. And 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 maybe some, some extra costs for the pedestal that we just don't know at this time. But with that said, the sign would come in the future and and it wouldn't all come at once, but we would, we would be able to to have a great-looking plaza up front and and it would be a a great accent to to the grocery store development that's moving forward.
I'm going to take the screen back if I can.
So Ben, could you go over the numbers again? What what's being considered for Dave and myself?
Absolutely. So I I have the breakdown of the overall numbers, too. I believe those are, they, yes, so. So as far as the general conditions, that's the part that, because they're already in sight, that's part of the mobilization, whatnot. That's the part that would be cut in half, the 18,000. The insurance and the contractor's fee. And then the total construction cost is the 201,000. That comes to 261. And that is for all the grading work, all the landscaping, the trees, the concrete, the lighting, the backlighting on the pillars that go down that Jason showed on that plan that he had up. And has all of the site components as well. This was all in the, is in the Dropbox for your review prior to, but I can certainly go back up to the to the memo with the total amount. Which is what we're budgeting for right now is the 261,245 dollars with RNO construction. What we may want to, the council may want to consider is is any direction that is not included in this motion with regard to a clock, if that's the direction. At one point, we were talking about fountains, we were talking about monuments and whatnot, but each had their their issues and elements. The the fountain with water posed a maintenance issue and a winter time issue. The monument had different, different concerns and issues. And so really what was, what we're putting forth is the idea of a clock tower at this point, but it's really up to the council's discretion.
Well, I agree with what you have proposed for what it's worth. So, council, any comments?
I have a question for Ben. So I understand, I'm I'm seeing your numbers, but you say the clock tower is not added. So what's the number with the clock tower?
It depends on the the type of clock clock tower that you want to acquire. But if we were to go with what the staff would recommend, which is a pedestal, this, this actually is, this includes the amount for a pedestal. What I actually have in here, if you were to go through the numbers and whatnot, I'm proposing that the savings of the 18,000 would be the flexibility that we could have to work out the pedestal. We need, we really need to get the design specs from the, from the clock tower manufacturer to know what that pedestal design elements need to be, how deep it needs to go in the ground and the whole bit. But then add the masonry or whatever we want to add to the outside to make it look nice. The clock tower, Jason, you had the the number on the 30-foot that they provided you.
So if if you, like I say, I think it'd be roughly 115,000, $120,000. So if you added that to it, you're looking at at 381 for for the park plaza and the clock tower. That doesn't count the sign, which which again, Ben mentioned, could come at a later time with a little bit more more careful planning and and community involvement.
Signs can be as as little as is a few thousand dollars and as much as several, you know, anywhere from 20 to 30,000 or or more. It really depends on what you want to have in a sign and and whatnot. The two aspects, what we're we're really looking forward to right now is pulling the trigger on RNO because of the cost savings that we would have. And we would bring to you a more specific cost associated with with the clock tower at a future date, based on any kind of feedback you have on as far as the elements, so a clock that you want to see incorporated and and letting them do a a true bid and that we can put on a future agenda. As far as the clock tower and the sign itself, we're proposing not to use park impact fee funds, but economic development funds. And that was in the memo as well. Because we do, this, this really is that gateway. Because we do this, this really is that gateway opens up the whole thirty two acre development and it's it's our front porch, if you will. And having a nice landscaped area really would add. Add to the class of the community and the overall look and feel. And. And so anyway, that's a good use of economic development funds to help. To support that as well as be inviting to potential restaurants that may tie into it.
And Councilmember Hathaway, it also should be mentioned that that would be the total cost of the project. Again, the first fifty thousand dollars was part of the the incentive agreement, so. As Ben has indicated in his memo. The the final cost would be one ninety two, eight seventy nine, fifty plus the one twenty thousand, so you're looking more at at a. Oh, gosh, what is that?
About about three hundred and twenty thousand.
Yeah, so. That's that would be the the total cost of the project that the city would 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 be obligated to do. Now, again, as Ben mentioned, it's it's important enough, that's just a cost estimate. This is not a an official bid, so. That's that's the best numbers that we have to work off right now without any, you know, solid decision of how to move forward.
We would love to have direction on the clock tower, but it's not ready for council consideration tonight as far as a bid. But the 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 park part is. And and that is a little bit more time sensitive, and that's why we're bringing it forward to you tonight.
I'd just like to say thanks, Ben, for the explanation of how he's going to pay for the clock tower. That was kind of where I was going with that, but you've answered that, so thank you.
Well, the one nice thing is with, I mean, not that there's a nice thing about the COVID, but it does make us span two fiscal years, and so that's beneficial. But even irrespective of that. Park impact fee funds and economic development funds are both in the bank right now and their money's on hand, they're not if come, it's. It's monies that we have that we could put forward towards this project right away.
Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to to approve the improvements to the four hundred East Main Street Park. With an overall budget amount of not to exceed two hundred and sixty one thousand dollars and two. Let me say that again. Two hundred and sixty one thousand two hundred and forty five dollars. With R and O construction.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Montoya, do we have a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
We have a second by Councilman Meekum. Any further discussion, if not. We will go through a vote here, Councilmember Montoya.
Aye.
Councilman Meekum.
Aye.
Councilmember Bowman.
Aye.
Councilman Hathaway.
Aye.
And Councilman Miller.
Aye.
Mayor, is there any direction on the clock? Do you want us to, is this a direction we should go and? Any elements that you want to share with us? That you want to have included or? Yeah, let us put a bid together and let you tweak it.
Yeah, what's it claiming other than six months? We have to pay for it upfront or?
We'll find that out.
What are we going to do?
I imagine we would need to make a deposit. In order to get the the footprint in the plans and for them to do their design. But we don't know what that is at this point. And we there, it's just a cost estimate until we start giving them some more specific on the specifics on the design. And so if you have, if you like the the look and the. The color and and the style. We can move forward with that. It has certain elements such as. The black exterior and and black on top, the Roman numeral face has the circle. Gingerbread look to the outside as far as a design element that could be different colors or could be black. And it even has some some bells on it as a decorative, we could either incorporate that or not, or if we have bells within our community that. That anyone wanted to donate, we could incorporate some history into it as well. Lots of things we could consider, we can just put a proposal and let's send it out and see what you guys think, but if there's anything. Any comments that you have right now that you want to steer us in a better direction right up front, we'd be more than happy to accept that.
And I got a question. If you put together like the, I mean, give us a picture of the clock and then on the side put. The, I guess I'd call it the bells and whistles and what those would cost.
Sure.
So that we can kind of look at what options there is. You could look at them, does that make sense?
Exactly, because literally there is a bell right here. And if you wanted, you could have a whistle in it that would actually ding, because the cock, the the bell is a. Typically, they're not made to ring a bell, but they actually have speakers in the inside and you could put that element into it, so. Dave, you're very astute to say, yes, we will give you, we can give you the exact bells and whistles for this project.
Nice, thank you.
I think we should make it a cuckoo clock.
Midway has little people come out of it, you know, so.
Siren every morning at eight o'clock and a siren at six o'clock at night. When to get up and when to go to bed. I like I like that idea, you know, show us what we can have with it and we can determine that later.
Okay.
Right. Moving on real fast, item nine D, discussion. Regarding possible requirements of front and side landscaping for new construction. In non-planned unit development, PUD areas.
All right, Mayor and Council, I am sharing my screen right now. This is, this is something that. Councilmember. Miller brought up years ago. It's it's been an idea that's been thrown around for a while. And we're we're getting to a point right now where where it's it's. A discussion that that we're looking for direction from the council on before we move through a a. A formal code amendment process, so. If you can see my my screen, it's just a Word document and we can, we can even add.
You stop talking.
You're muted, Jason.
Yes, I know, but as I was holding my spacebar, it was making my Word document go crazy, so. Anyways, so the these are a list of pros and cons that that we put together. And obviously, there there could be more, but. The Planning Commission has has informally discussed this, this has not received a public hearing or has not received any. A motion for recommendation or anything like that. We're looking for the direction from the council tonight, whether or not we should pursue and move forward with with this as a formal ordinance amendment process. So just quickly, right now in the city, I would probably guess. At least eighty percent, if not more, of the development happening in Santaquin right now. Is has some sort of a landscaping, front yard and side yard requirement. That's because it's either in a PUD or it's in Summit Ridge where there's there's a. Terms of a development agreement that require that it be landscaped up front at the time of of building permit. So the majority of of homes being built right now are putting in landscaping up front, but there still is. Is a little bit of development, more in the core area of town and and other areas that aren't necessarily in a PUD or or have a development agreement tied to them. Where they don't have that requirement to put landscaping in up front. So. Just quickly going through pros and cons, obviously, pros of of having a landscaping requirement would be that it beautifies Santaquin City. Instead of of these unfinished front yards that can turn into weed patches and and attract clutter and and things like that. Landscaping would be up front and it would make the city look nicer. It'd protect the rights of neighbors. Neighbors, if if they move in with the expectation that their neighborhood is going to look nice and be nice, if their neighbors aren't keeping their 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 yards or. Installing their yards. Then then that might decrease. The value of their neighborhood and and they might feel that that they are losing the enjoyment of their property. It would, it would provide for erosion, dust, weed control, getting grass down would would help. Control those those types of things that can be nuisances in our community. It maintains property values. And it creates a standard and expectation for anybody that builds in Santaquin that that we have yards up front and and instead of it being. You know. Certain developments require landscaping yards up front and certain developments don't, it would have one standard that that everybody would be held to. Cons, additional upfront costs for for people building a home. You know, it's it's. Always a topic that comes up in the state of Utah right now about affordable housing and and this would add a little bit more cost to to different housing. For them to to put in their yard up front, so that's something that that could be looked at as a con. A tracking burden, what I mean by that is is if we. If we have more homes that are required to put landscape landscaping in up front, obviously during the winter months, that's not feasible for them to do. So what we would do in that case is is we would, we would require a landscaping bond. Which would then need to be tracked and it's usually tracked by our our city engineer and 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 those staff to to. Give them an opportunity to wait till spring when the pressurized irrigation systems turn on to to then. Install that landscaping and then they could receive that bond money back. Right now, our landscaping bond amount is about thirty five hundred dollars. Just to give you an idea of what that extra cost might be if if. If they couldn't install their landscaping during the winter months. And then finally, it would, it would require additional enforcement if if people do not. Meet this this new regulation and put their landscaping in up front. You know, it's it's easy to have that as a regulation, but but unless it's going to be enforced, it's it's not going to be followed, so there would need to be extra time. For people to enforce and 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 encourage people to put that landscaping in up front and and, you know. Worst case scenario. Enforced with penalties and and fines and things like that, so. Those are the pros and cons that that. We've been able to to come up with, you probably, you may have more, and I'm happy to add those here as you discuss it.
Okay, any thoughts, any additions to that?
So something, something that Councilmember Hathaway is asking, I'll clarify. This is for only for new construction, this would not be. Like a retroactive type situation where we would reach back into the past. That would be from from a point in time where the council decides to approve this, it will be only for new construction.
Okay. I, you know, I know Councilman Miller brought this up, but it's it's been on my. Back of my mind too as well. Of having this. A uniform thing in the city that. Santaquin being known for having their free yards in and. And trying to take care of them. And I think it's a step in the right direction.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
If someone purchases a double lot. And the extra lot is on the side of their house, would they be required to landscape that? As well, or would they just be expected to control the weeds? On that?
Again, this is not a a formal draft, we can really make this into whatever the council would feel appropriate. My my feeling to to your 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 question would be that whatever. Lot has the building permit on it is what they would be required to do, so if they had an extra extra remnant lot that was. Completely separate parcel. I wouldn't expect that we would require them to landscape that, that would just. Remain vacant until such time that somebody. Builds on that and takes out a building permit.
So a little more clarity on that is it would, it would be a site specific type situation. Councilmember Montoya is that whatever, whatever the 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 area is that a home. When a site plan and a building permit is issued, sorry, not a site plan, but a building permit would be issued. It would be addressed upon, like Jason's saying, upon that particular lot. It's not holistic to like a subdivision necessarily. It would be more related to building permits, is that correct, Jason?
That's correct. But again, this is a, this is just a discussion, we're looking for your direction, so there there could be. Any language that you you want to add or or any details that you'd want to add, this is just. Kind of our our thoughts as we're wrapping our heads around around this particular topic.
I like it, I think it's, I think it's a good idea. And to just, this is for the front and side yards, correct?
Correct, that would be our thought right now, there there are some cities that go as far as as requiring backyards to be landscaped as well. That might be a little overkill, at least in my opinion. But but the sides and front yards are going to be the most visible and and in the case of like a corner lot. They would have secondary frontage, which would also be required. Maybe unless they had a fence that that. You know, hid hid the side yard that that seemed to be more like a backyard, so. The the intent with this is is really to to. To have those improvements up front so they look good, but also to to control some of the negative impacts that come from just a vacant lot.
Okay, yeah, I I I like this and so. What is the next step, actually drafting an ordinance and then giving it to us to review?
So if you if you guys like this idea, we would set a public hearing. Wouldn't be able to be on the next planning commission meeting, but but the following ones would be the. The second planning commission, well, the first planning commission in May, May twelfth, we'd set a public hearing for that and we would work on some draft language. Hold a public hearing, get a recommendation from the planning commission and then. It could be back to the council meeting as soon as May nineteenth for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. I like it.
Okay, any other thoughts?
Yeah, Mayor, I have a couple of thoughts. The the first thing, I don't, I don't think this should be anything super restrictive. I've seen this in in a lot of cities that are extremely restrictive. So as this is discussed, and again, this was like four years ago that I brought this up, but. As this is discussed, I don't think we need to be restrictive on. Number of plants and trees and stuff like that, that's not my intent, my intent is is something done. Grass specifically, because it looks a lot better than what we're dealing with. Tracking burden, I think there's got to be a way for us to to do it inside of our. Software that we're using now, additional enforcement, my goal is is still to get enforcement. Code enforcement as a priority. I don't think there'll be much more additional enforcement as we. Get our police department fully staffed and have a code enforcement officer, I don't anticipate it's gonna. Take up too much more time, he'll just be out doing his regular job and as he sees stuff then. It gets mentioned, so my 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 intent is definitely not to make it more restrictive or hard on a homeowner. But also same with city staff as well, I just think something needs to be done.
So and and I appreciate you bringing up that point, that that jogged my memory to to something else the planning commission had had recommended. In lieu of of a bonding option. What what they, and I guess obviously still the the winter time. Lack of ability to do landscaping, a bond could still apply there. But the planning commissions, they they like the idea of of just full on requiring that landscaping be in before they they get a C of O. Certificate of occupancy, so before they can move in the house, they have to have landscaping in. Other cities will sometimes do bonding across the entire year. And then it's a requirement that they get their landscaping in within one year. That's that requires a lot of of tracking of bonds and 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 people's money, so. Taking the approach of of requiring it before a certificate of occupancy would would speak to your point about creating less of a burden and and. However, you know, it would be an adjustment for for some of these home builders, because. That's something that they would need to to work with their homeowner on is is. It's before they can wrap up the construction of their home and 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 the work that they're doing for that client. They would need to also coordinate on on a. The installation of that that landscaping, so that does create a little bit more of a burden on on. On the the side of of the home builder or the the person building the home, so. Those are some other things to consider and that we appreciate your direction on.
Good, anything else? You've got your direction then?
I guess I'd say, so are you, are you good with with requiring it before certificates of occupancy, or do you like the idea of giving them a year and and tracking all that bonding?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't know that it needs to be. At the certificate of occupancy, but I definitely don't think it needs to be a year. But then again, I understand now we're just creating a burden on someone, because who's going to track it? So I I don't know where the the line is and I don't know if it's the bond. I don't know, I was hoping someone else would study it out and come to us with ideas and then we could talk about it.
Okay, well, this this is a, if you give us the direction, we can take this through the amendment process and there will continue to be discussion on it and and possible solutions.
I agree with Nick, I think we need to have some leeway for winter time, keeping people out of their brand new home because it snowed. For six months is not fair, but we got to find a way to. For six months is not fair. Um but we got to find a way to to get around that. One of the things to to bonding process is that we we set the bond high enough. That that it is a somewhat of a pinch financially where they really want to get that money back. Thirty five hundred dollars on a standard home. Is probably a little more than what some less expensive contractors can do the work for, but. It's a little bit of a pinch so that there is some incentive for them to get it done and come and get their money back.
I think a year is fair, but I mean, I don't know. The neighborhood I moved into had. That requirement where it had to be done within a year. Of course, nobody enforced it. Um we had our stuff done within a year, but it gave us time, right, to. To get stuff together. I don't know. It's worth thinking about it, I guess, and talking it over.
I guess I guess when you say the word year, are you talking season? Like, are you are you talking one of the the upcoming land?
We'd have to just, yeah, we'd have to decide on that, too. I mean. Year from year of occupancy, but I guess it just kind of depends on how we wanted to find it.
So to Councilman Miller's point, if you give him a year and it's December, they really only have a season to get it done unless you make it eighteen months. They want to move in in December. They they're ready for a certificate of occupancy in in December, but they obviously can't landscape in December. The the year is really more of a season type deal because in December of the next year, they're not going to be landscaping more than likely.
I might be a ding dong on this, but if you can afford to buy a house, you should be able to afford to put in your yard. If you can't afford to put in your yard, don't buy the house. So we need to act in a way and and if we can get the city to follow that. Suit, we have a lot better people, the residents living within our city.
Well, along along with that, you have during the whole time you're building a house, you have enough time to plan and prepare. To get this done, and that's why I don't think, that's why I don't like the year idea. I understand, I I agree with a window. Let's give them a window to get it done, but you have a while of preparing and planning that you can do this.
Hey, I think I got your direction.
I just, yeah, go ahead.
All right, yeah, all right. The last one, item ninety E, discussion regarding possible terms of mining ordinances. Go ahead, whoever. Is that you, Jason?
Yeah, so I'll I'll keep going. So uh let me share my screen again with you. Uh I put together just a to to help. Help us move through this a little bit uh more quickly and efficiently uh efficiently. We uh we've met with uh. Us representatives from Sunrock um and the Clyde Company, and they are the entities that are interested in. Doing some mining on the the Sittler property, which is south of Summit Ridge. Um I think a a good precursor to this is remembering that anything that that would be done in a mining zone is going to. Could could be applied citywide. Now, obviously, uh the zone would need to apply, so it's not just a a, you know, opening the floodgates for. Any anybody to start mining, but they would still need to go through a legislative rezoning process to to have their property designated for mining. But nonetheless, this this mining zone could apply for for different areas. Uh and and we've had a couple of different mining type proposals move forward. So I think that's important to keep in mind as we move through this. But we we met with those representatives. We we provided them the latest, greatest uh draft of the mining zone ordinance. We wanted to get their feedback on it and hear. Uh where where they had some some concerns or or where where things needed to be discussed a little more. Uh and and I should say that the draft that we we sent to them was the draft that the planning commission spent. Uh considerable amount of time reviewing and and refining to to what it is today. So as we got those comments back. We we are preparing to respond to those comments with with uh uh comments from the city, and there was a number of items that. Uh we as staff felt were a completely a policy decision, and we needed the direction from the city council. In order to respond to them. So I put together this presentation. I think you can all see that there. Um just to run through these bullet points and to get your your feedback and and your take on on these items. Uh the first item is um uh right now crushing operations, stockpiling and conveying. Uh is considered a permitted use in the draft mining ordinance. Uh a comment they brought back to us was uh. That they would also like to have importing of rock, sand, gravel and building materials as part of that permitted use. Now, there's a couple of different uh angles that you can take on this. Obviously, that would give them a little bit more flexibility to make their operation more. Uh effective and and uh give them some flexibility to to do things with the the material that they mine. However. Uh bringing in outside rock, sand, gravel and building materials could could uh. Expand the scope of 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 what the intention might be in the in the council's eyes, and and that is that if mining is to happen. It wouldn't just be a mining operation. It would be mining to to help prep prepare the ground for for future development, much like our our mask grading. Uh provisions right now. So what does the council feel on on that topic? Are you okay with with a mining operation bringing in outside material for for them to. To help mix in with everything else that else that they're doing?
Jason, to me, that kind of means that they're going to use it as a dump site. Uh that's not it, is it?
Well, and and I don't think it'd be necessary that they use it as a dump site, but if it's permitted, that that takes a little bit of of uh. I shouldn't say control away, but it it's it's a lot more unexpected of of how they're going to uh treat that side and what it's going to look like. You know, an example that that is brought up is is the the site, right as you get off the Provo Center Street exit, there is a site there that has. Outside materials brought in and and you know, they have it stockpiled and it's it's not the most uh attractive. Uh site because of the fact they're bringing in outside materials, but uh nonetheless, it is something that they see as important in order for them to. To fully utilize the the aggregate that they're mining, they would like to bring in outside material to mix in with that and make it uh. You know, make it what they need it to be in order for them to to sell that a- aggregate.
Okay, so they're going to crush the material and 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 classify it with a with a material or mining, right?
Correct.
So the intent here, Mayor, would be to to mix and and supplement what they have. I mean, there are sites like the Point of the Mountain that has. A lot of sand, but not a lot of of large rock. And so. This this gives them the flexibility to mix together different products, whether it's what they're mining or what they can mass grade on site. Or something they have to bring in to supplement that that would allow them to have more marketability and more ability to to have. A a broader range of marketable product essentially. But I agree with you that I think that that that's a very good point in that we we need to make sure that there's wording in there that this just doesn't become a dump.
Well, Don, on the other site, Sunrock's other site didn't, they were starting to haul in gypsum or some other there in Summit Ridge. And we had something in our code that said they couldn't haul any store anything on that site. To sell that way. This wouldn't apply to that at all, right?
It's it's my understanding that a lot of the work that Sunrock's doing right now uh is is in in the county. They do have some that that is still in Santaquin City. There there is a current conditional use permit for a part of what they're doing down there. But they do also have a lot of ground that's in the county and and that might, what you're referring to, might be uh on that county property, on the 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 property within the county.
Well, Mayor, they have a, they actually have a landfill permit for a portion of their property in in Juab County that is not currently. Uh I'm sorry, in Utah County that is not currently within Santaquin City. That may be what you're what you're talking about. I don't know. But they currently have a a small scale landfill down there that they can put like like we have with ours, construction debris, rock, asphalt. Et cetera, et cetera. That that's a permit that's outside of the city's purview. That that may be what you're talking about. I don't know.
Well, yeah, I just make sure they weren't hauling anything in that uh could contaminate, you know, Santaquin City. Or anything that way, but uh yeah, I that would be my only concern.
I I need more information before I can give an answer to that question. I I need I need. Um opportunities to do more research and um and hear about. Examples of what this question could represent before I'm able to give an answer.
Yeah, and at this point, this is not something to put in language for for them to move forward for your consideration. This is again, direction we're getting from you so that we can. Communicate with uh the the potential mining operators and and give them an idea of of what where the council's minds are at with with these issues.
Question number two.
What does Senate, what does the council feel about making hot plants, batch plants and processing plants a conditional use in the proposed M one zone? We've had this discussion before. This 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 isn't one that is should be foreign to you and and. Uh some of the council members were able to go on some field trips and look at hot bat- hot batch plants and and concrete plants and whatnot, but. Right now, in the draft language, the planning commission worked on it, shown as a a not permitted, and and again, this these uh mining operator. Um entities are are interested in in having that be something part of what they do.
Jason, what um was there information about this in the Dropbox beyond just being listed in the agenda?
No, there was not. This is something that that we've been coordinating with him and then on and and. I put together this presentation to help guide us through this discussion, but this isn't an action item, so we're just looking for your direction.
Just, okay, so will you please remind everyone um the location of of this property and. Um what we're looking at for an M one zone, like where it's located?
Sure. Um are you able to see the map that I have up? Did that?
No, no, because it's in a different, no, but I have, but I have, I have my zoning map.
Okay, can you see it now?
Yes.
Yes.
So here's the second interchange. Here's Summit Ridge. The Sittler property is is this property all right here.
Yeah.
And part of the reason why we are 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 encouraged by by them wanting to work on this property is because. There's not a lot out there right now. Summit Ridge is obviously growing to the south, but currently in the regional transportation plan. It's it's a visionary project project. It's not something that's going to happen in the the near future. But there is planned to to be or expected to be at some point in the future, a regional highway system that would come from I fifteen. Uh through Goshen Canyon uh and then connect up uh through Saratoga Springs and and what what you guys would understand being Redwood Road or the. Mountain View Corridor. So for them to do that work now would be better before houses are built any closer to it. Um but you know, there'd be years of work there and and as they they uh work on on the material that's there, it'll it'll uh. In turn uh address the grade there to to make it um prepared for a regional. Highway system.
Well, and we have, we have discussed before that if work like that is going to be done, we would rather have it done. Before Summit Ridge expands farther south. Then after Summit Ridge expands farther south and that work is being done closer to to homes. What I I would rather have the work done before homes get closer to that piece of property. Or that site. And as far as a hot batch plant. Um I, the the field trip that we went on, so he, so here's the thing. If it's if it's a hot batch plant like the one that we toured. I wouldn't have as much of an issue with it, but because we don't know what what kind of a planet would be. Like, I I actually was was pleasantly surprised on that field trip up to Salt Lake that. The smell was very minimal, the noise um was very minimal from the plant itself. Um we asked some neighbors about the dust, but but again, um you know, if the if the work is done before homes. Are as close as the homes are to the one in Salt Lake, that wouldn't be as much of an issue. But my concern would be that. Um the one that's operated in Salt Lake that we toured is operated by one of the safest companies in the nation. And very reputable and does really good work and is responsible. So I even asked them about the number of injuries on their site and how they take care of their employees and what their salaries are and things like that. When we toured up there. So my biggest concern would be who, we don't know who's going to operate it. I wouldn't want to. I would, I would not feel comfortable approving something without knowing who's going to operate it and what their standard of excellence is. That's my thought on that.
Well, if it's Sunrock and Clyde Companies, they do a lot of this stuff. And they're all over the state and all over the Western United States as well. So I'm sure they'd be a pretty reputable company.
Yeah, like I mentioned before, the difficult thing with this is if if this were to put in the zone. Uh and say somebody else came in and wanted this zone to be applied to them, that you know, that would be part of your consideration. Is this is this company reputable for us to rezone their property to a mining zone? So uh you you will still have that discretion of of who does, but if if you approve it as a mining zone, then then if it's a conditional use permit. That that's something that is going to be an option for them.
Question number three.
What does the Santaquin City Council feel about permitting the stockpiling, storing and reprocessing of recycled asphalt, concrete and aggregate? This is very much similar to question number one, but uh this is more bringing in outside recycled material and and. Chewing up asphalt to incorporate into to the aggregate that they have and and mixing it so that they can uh in turn. Uh improve that aggregate for their their purposes to sell.
Is this similar to what uh Janine Rock does in Payson across from the sewer?
I I am not sure of what exactly they do there. I don't know if you know, Norm.
I'm not familiar with that, but Dave, Dave feels like that that's correct.
Yeah, I think that's where, Len, that's where they cr- they bring their concrete and re-crush it right there, yes.
So the recycled asphalt would go back into asphalt. The recycled concrete and other aggregate would go into. A classified materials, uh dirt and rock.
That's correct.
They're saying recycled asphalt would be an asphalt plant.
So so that aspect of it is actually uh uh potentially good for the environment where we're not taking brand new raw materials and. And making asphalt, for instance, we for 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 the city side of things, we actually allow fifteen percent of recycled asphalt. In new asphalt because it it they are able to use it for regenerating the asphalt or making it a a a. Somewhat renewable product. It's not completely, obviously, but it is somewhat good for the environment as well to be able to do that. So that that's not a bad thing. I'm okay with that.
Question number four.
Okay, if a mining zone were approved and the zone was applied to a given piece of property. Who does the Santaquin City Council feel should be the land use authority for approving mining operation proposals?
So if I may on this one, this is this is something that we've had discussions with the the folks out there on the Sittler property, the Sunrock folks. This is, this is a little bit different than, for instance, our mass grading. Uh we we have mass grading that doesn't allow blasting or asphalt plants or other things. In the city right now, where it just allows them to extract material and and make it so that it's more developable. We're seeing that on a large scale right now out there in Summit Ridge. It's it's ma- i- i- it makes man land more developable. This part, this this type of a mining operation, what they have envisioned on this property, five hundred and sixty acres, is a very long term. This is not a two-year um re- re-up on the conditional use permit like we have for the for the Sunrock permit. Okay, this is, this is probably more of a of a, we could look at it every two to five years, but this is a very long term. Operation where the the it's going to be there for a while. And so the the question is, how often do we look at it and who approves it? And then therefore who becomes the the appeal authority, right? So the the land use authority, one of the reasons why. We have it the way that we have it right now is because some things in in DRC, DRC can approve. And if there's a problem, then the council can revisit or the if there's a disagreement or or an appeal, then the council becomes the appeal authority. If we put the council right at the top. Right at the beginning, then district court ends up being the appeal authority. And so that's that's kind of why. The the question is there.
The the other thing I think the council should consider is is you know, once this mining zones in place and and we're looking at approving a a given operation, it becomes an administrative act. Councils I've worked with in the past have been have been put in a bind when there's opposition to it and and the council is trying to to listen to their constituents. However, they're they're, you know, between a rock and a hard place because they have an administrative action which they have to oversee. So it's that that's something else and you and you guys have experienced that recently with with different administrative decisions that are have come before you. It's it's hard for the council to 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 be have their administrative and their 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 elected representative hats on at the same time. So that's why we're we're bringing it to you, this question to you is is to get your your feedback in direction.
Mayor and Council, we we have twenty minutes left before the end of our legitimate use of time as far as a council is concerned. I'm I'm wondering where council member Montoya mentioned that, that, you know, we didn't have those questions out to you in advance. If it wouldn't be appropriate just to read those questions, the the last, I think there's three additional questions, read them to you. And then send them out to you via email as well, so that you can maybe take some time between the next now and the next meeting, or even just if if you could send us emails back type of thing. That would that would give us enough time for reports and allow you to call it a night.
Okay, go for it, Jason.
Hey, the next question, does the Santaquin City Council feel that it is necessary for an applicant to provide an estimated timeframe to complete operations and to provide a phasing plan? This kind of goes with what Norm just talked about of 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 we've asked for it right now. They feel like it's hard for them to estimate what what a a timeframe would be. But yet I think there still needs to be some some expectation and understanding of how long they'll be there. Question six, does the Santaquin City Council desire to have a local control over impacts such as dust, noise, odor and other things? Even though those impacts are regulated by state entities and the Santaquin staff does not have the means and or expertise to enforce such regulations? For example, with dust, there's a tool that they use to to read the opacity or or the how well you can see the air. If it's, if it's really dusty, then then it's a little bit harder to see, you know, hundred, two hundred yards or whatever. We don't have the tools to to measure opacity and and frankly, none of us really have a a good understanding of how how that's measured and what that means. So that's why staff's a little bit reluctant to to really dive into that. Nonetheless, local control is important because relying on on a state entity who's way up in Salt Lake to to address some of the concerns that we're experiencing in in Santaquin. There's, there's, there's things there that that need to be weighed. Question seven, what does the Santaquin City Council feel should be the typical hours of operation for mining operations? Right now in in the draft, it's shown to be seven to seven, which is is typical with mass grading and 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 similar types of operations. They've come back and and they've suggested six o'clock to ten o'clock. They want a little bit more time to work on things and there's obviously a a further component of of doing UDOT projects and having to work through the middle of the night, and that might be something separate and an exception under certain circumstances. But I think the key word here is what's what's the typical hours that they could operate? And then that's it. So we, like Ben said, we'll we'll send these questions to you so that you can look at them, think over them a little bit more, and then the next council meeting, we can continue our discussion and get your direction.
Okay, reports, Ben, you're up.
Mayor and Council, on your on your Dropbox is the ATI report for this week. A lot of great things are going on. Of course, we're responding to COVID nineteen. We've got some great, great employees who are putting themselves out there to take care of the needs of our community. So we appreciate them. I just read a email from the league saying, you know, please don't, please don't cancel your celebrations yet. Things are improving and and that came from Lieutenant Governor. So some good things there too. But you can go through and and read the manager's report, and if there's anything that jumps out at you, please let me know. Just to bring you aware of a couple of issues. You're already are aware of the grocery store and and all that type of thing. That's great news. All of our community has irrigation water at this time, except for a small portion of Summit Ridge. That that is because of a backflow device that needed to be installed. And it increased from a four inch to a a ten inch. And it's likely to be completed on Thursday and or Friday, the water could be turned on. That is because the thrust blocks and other things that need to be installed have to have time to cure.
Yeah.
So.
It's the influence the mayor has. I'm out of water.
Well, I am too. So usually the argument is that the city manager's road gets plowed first. Well, we're getting the water last, right? So that's the way it should be, right? Last will be first, first will be last. And then we have two issues on the East Bench that came to our attention just today. Well, one was a while ago. That is a deer issue and we're looking into some concerns with deer in the area. And the second is with regard to the shooting range that's being used on state property. And apparently we've had some reports that have just percolated up through the police department today of some homes that have been hit through through some of the shooting on the East Bench. And that's extremely alarming. You know, that has potential for major injury or even death. And so we'll be looking into that. Obviously, nobody wants to have their rights restricted and have their ability to shoot taken away or anything like that. But if if there's irresponsible use and people could be harmed from that, we're we're very concerned. Somehow we we need to get the deer and the shooters together so that we can take care of both problems or something. I'm not sure. But those are two issues that popped up on the East Bench just this week. And is there any questions the council has for me?
Nope.
Okay, that's it.
Norm, you're up.
Mayor and Council, just following up on a lot of development work going on right now. You may have seen some paving going on out in Summit Ridge for the hills. They'll be plating that first fifty six to sixty homes in there pretty quick. Same thing with Foothill, continuing to go there and continuing to go on the north end. So just a lot of of and around the grocery store as well, a lot of development work going on right now that we're just trying to keep up with and make sure that we're getting good inspections and and making sure that they're they're meeting our standards. Happy to answer any of the questions you may have on other particular items.
Good job, Norm. Thank you. Any other questions for him? Okay, Jason?
I have two things for you. I'm sharing my screen again. This was in your Dropbox. There was a recently approved Foothill plat I. And you can see that the red highlighted area, there was a a a mistake made on on the the plat, the a previous plat that instead of the 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 lot line being coming around the corner, it kind of was on an inverse. And so you have this kind of funnel look. Basically, in speaking with with our attorney Brett Rich, because it was, it was an error, we just wanted to bring you to your attention that we're going to to fix that error and do it through a quick claim deed back to the developer so that that corner can be fixed. It was, it was wondered if it was a full on vacation of right away, but since nothing's been built there and and it's just an error that happened, we'll get that fixed and and we'll move forward with that. The other thing I wanted to report to you on is we received a proposed final plat for what's what they're calling the McMullen subdivision. Two years ago, this was approved preliminarily as the McMullen twin homes. However, they've come to us recently and they said they've had kind of a change of plans and instead of doing twin homes, they would like to do single family lots. Now, the thing with that, because that's a a a change in in from what they were preliminary approved to do, it might be be understood that they would need to go back to preliminary and go to to Planning Commission and the City Council and get a reapproval for it. However, my my guess is that this is would be a welcomed change, going from twin homes to single family homes. Plus, I think the major thing with this is the the plat actually does not look that much different than when it was twin homes. There might be a few little measurements, minor changes here and there, but our our ordinance allows for if it's only a minor change that it can move forward. And I think with this being a welcomed change from twin homes to to, you know, still smaller, single family lots that I get, I report this to the Planning Commission and City Council and allow them to move forward with with that. Now, we've tried to think of if there's anything that 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 changes, the only thing that I can think of is in if it were twin homes, they would need to go through the ARC and get approval for how those look. If it's single family homes, there are still very basic architectural requirements in a PUD, but they would not have to go to the the ARC. So that that's the only difference I really see. I've talked with Ben and Norm about this and others to see if if there's anything else that's there. But if if not, and the council doesn't have any concerns with this, we'll look at this as a a minor change and and we won't hold them up and and we'll let them proceed forward with with a final plat approval at the DRC level.
I agree, do it.
Okay, and then if you have any questions for me.
Council, anything for Jason? Okay, if not, council reports. Nick, what do you got?
I don't, I don't have anything, Mayor.
Okay. Council member Bowman, what do you think? Anything?
No, not tonight.
Good. Council member Montoya.
Yes, um, I have also heard from several residents on the East Bench who live close to that shooting area. And and they have told me that they're finding multiple bullet casings in their yards. There have been some homes that the bullets have actually gone through the exterior wall into the inside of the home and they find, they have found at least one bullet casing in a bathtub in the bathroom of a home. There was another report that someone found a bullet hole in a panel of their new truck. So there's a lot of damage happening and that's the least of the worries, right? Because if a child were to come in contact with stray bullet or somebody's just outside planting their garden. So that that is very unacceptable to me. And I think we need to act swiftly, please. I would request that we act swiftly, please, to figure out what we can do to stop that from happening.
This was brought to our attention today. Came up through from Officer LB to the chief and to myself. And we've requested that they put together a report of any kind of complaint. There's a combination of complaints from shooting, which has caused alarm in the area, just the hearing of the noise and whatnot, and actual casings and and bullets and houses being hit. If if this, this is the first I'm hearing of it, if there, if there really is an issue, I've asked them to put together a list of all of their cases so that we can then go to the state of Utah, because this is state ground. And I mean, obviously, there's a lot of gun owners in community, in our community. We did, we hate to 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 see further restrictions and whatnot. But if it's an irresponsible use and being shots being fired towards towards homes, then then the state of Utah needs to step in because it is their property and we'll work with them on that.
Okay, so some of the residents said that they contacted the BLM because they were told it was BLM land. And the BLM is saying that it's not their land, it's Sittler land.
It's neither. It's not BLM or Sittler. It's it's DNR, Department of Natural Resources land. And so we will, so it's getting to the right agency.
Okay, so so I will just ask them to contact our Santaquin Police Department to file a report.
Yes, anytime there's an issue, they should have everyone file a report.
Okay, I was just, I know we've kind of talked about it before that maybe some residents have expressed concern that it's a little too close for comfort, but today, this afternoon was the first that I had actually heard about damage and and bullet casings being found in yards and things like that. And so so I'm glad that you were made aware of it too. And I will just ask those folks to to each file a report with the police department.
Thank you.
Anything else?
We do have our youth city council scholarship winner, Abigail Hells. And she will be presented with that scholarship more toward the end of the school year. So that's an exciting, happy thing. We're proud of her.
Thank you. All right, anything else? David?
Just thank you for that meeting tonight, big guy. It was nice.
Lynn, anything?
Nothing, Mayor.
All right, one thing for me, quick. The mayors and county commissioners are getting a lot of pressure to open up businesses. And they've asked me to to question or the council, you know, Santaquin, to to see what your thoughts are in in getting the economy back, trying to get it started to come back and and win. So any thoughts there? It helped me and, you know, I've got to answer the question. So what's your thoughts?
Mayor, I've got a lot to say about this, but I'll keep it short. I think the more we can do to help our our business owners, the better, but we have to be smart about it. I think following the guidelines that the met, that the governor and and CDC has put out to when we open up, and I think it ought to be around the first of May, that we start with that. And we require six foot distances. We require masks if we need to, but I think we got to open up. But if you go to Walmart, they're open. People are in there with and without masks. If we can do that, I think we can start with some of our other businesses and help them out. But we got to be careful and and constantly watch the numbers. Because it would just take one or two cases here with a huge business open and it could shut us right back down, so.
Thank you. Any other thoughts?
I, Mayor, I feel like there's, it's a fine line, but I'm with Lynn on most of that, except for the mask part. I think, I think the six foot rule and reminding people to, you know, obviously hand washing and all that kind of stuff. We got, we got to let these businesses kind of get open back up because to me, that's, that damage is getting bad.
Okay. You have something, Jen?
No, I just say I agree. And in the meantime, just shop local as much as you can. That's what I'm trying to do.
Perfect. Nick, any thoughts?
Uh, no, I I agree with what everyone's been saying. We've got to be smart. I think I read a thing that this winter or this next round, they're they're really concerned about and potentially can be worse than we've had so far. So I think I've been watching Utah really well and we've been doing good. Let's keep going forward.
Okay, thank you. Betsy, your thoughts?
I wish I could say that I'm really confident with just saying, yeah, open everything back up, but I'm not. Especially my business has been closed now for over a month. It will continue to be closed the rest of the school year. That's a, that's a significant hit in my income. But if I were to, if I were to take the chance of opening again this school year and a child got sick, I would never ever forgive myself, never. So I I understand the the financial impacts. But I, I just think it and and again, it's, it's, I think it's also a fine line too because the small business owners, you know, that is completely their livelihood. So they're feeling like they're not being considered essential to our, to our economy or our society when they are the, they are very essential to our economy and our society. They're the beating heart of our nation and our economy. But he, you know, hu- human life and health and safety need to take priority. And I think if if we are aware of business owners who are really suffering and struggling, I I would hope that we in our community would step up and show support to them as much as we can and offer offer help to them to get through this time because that's part of what makes Santaquin, Santaquin is when people come together to help each other. And we can't fix all the problems. But I think that we can, you know, if we all chip in a a little bit of support, what we're able to support to to help to help get them through this, then we can all come out on the other end and then we can all come out on the other end and and not have as many lives at risk.
Thank you. We've been, we've learned a lot through this last month. And hopefully, we will remember that, what we've learned. And so we'll see what happens, you know, as things get better, as we can't do anything until a governor says it says that we can anyway. But I hope when it does come, that we'll remember what we've learned and continue to be safe and clean and and all, everything that goes with it. And and then support, support our businesses. That's exactly right. So thank you. If there's nothing else, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Miller, second.
Second.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Councilmember Montoya, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Have a good night, guys.